Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an informational information session and special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, December 1st, 2022 at 6:05 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Close captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. And to our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for being with us tonight. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Singh, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
For our next item, we will recognize four outgoing trustees whose positions were filled by newcomers during the 2022 election. Dr. Mays, would you please share a few words?
I will, and thank you to our board and everybody that's here with us tonight. I'd like to formally thank you to our outgoing trustees, President Geronimo Rodriguez, District 6, Vice President Yasmin Wagner, District 7, Letitia Anderson, District 1, and Kirsten Ashy, District 4, for their tireless dedication to the students of Austin ISD. First District 1 trustee, Letitia Anderson, is a native Austinite. She attended Austin ISD schools, including Lanier and Austin High Schools. She has served on the board since 2018. Ms. Anderson has actively worked on AISD committees, including the Boundary Advisory Committee, African-American Advisory Committee for Educational Excellence, Single Gender Schools Planning Team, Instructional Materials Committee, and the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Letitia Anderson is the current parent of an Austin ISD high school student. During her term, we have had the immense honor of being part of trustee Anderson receiving her high school diploma from Garza High School and her Bachelor of Health Care Administration. We wish her well in her next steps as she starts her Master's of Healthcare Administration program. Trustee Anderson, thank you for all you have done for District 1 and Austin ISD. At this time, we would like to acknowledge trustee Anderson to share her final words.
You know, it hit me that this is my last night, but in true trustee Anderson fashion, I am so glad that I will not be sitting here till 2 o'clock in the morning ranting and raving. But I wanted to... My closing is pretty lengthy, so please bear with me. I wanted to go out like I came in, which is with a focus on serving students. So I would like to read some highlights from the campuses that I served. Andrews Elementary School. There are 11 languages represented at Andrews. Every week, they have a student who speaks a language other than English share a word from their language with the school. This becomes their Word of the Week, which they say every morning on announcements and post on their Word of the Week bulletin board. Barrington Elementary School. The looking back and looking forward POCs have been happening consistently at their campus, and the teachers find much value in the conversations happening during this time. Blackshire Elementary School. Blackshire PTA was also awarded a mini grant from the Austin Parks Foundation for $250 to beautify the front of their building. They had a well-attended catch night with healthy foods, healthy activities, and free haircuts. Blanton Elementary School, my home away from home. Blanton counselors, Ms. Cruz and Ms. Rios, have established and grown an exemplary counseling program. They use innovative scheduling strategies to make a difference through regular classroom lessons, lunch bunches, social skills groups, individual counseling, and check-ins with at-risk students. They communicate with parents and caregivers and coordinate with their licensed mental health person for home visits and support. They lead the No Place for Hate activities and PALS program, where 4th and 5th graders mentor young students. They support the campus SEL CPNI Steering Committee and Academic Tutoring Initiative. In addition, they have established a strong start parent class in partnership with Safe Alliance, connect many families to outside counseling resources, and seek community partnerships for donations and coordinate childcare with the PTA to increase parent participation in after-school events. Campbell Elementary School. I'm gonna miss y'all so much. This weekend, four of their junior journalist scholars brought from the broadcast team were honored with the opportunity to work alongside Dr. Nicole Cross from Spectrum News 1 to interview participants on the red carpet during the sold-out premiere of Black Panther II Wakanda Forever at Cinemark 20 Theatres on Friday, November 11. Dalen Scott, a reporter, is now running the story featuring their scholars on Spectrum News. This was on 11/14. Clifton Center has a program change that allows them to serve all students, not just those receiving special education services. They were awarded a $5,000 Austin Ed Fund Grant to build the identity around the new programming. Dobie Middle School. They have started a Discipline Disparities Committee to take a deeper look into disparities and discipline among African-American students. The committee had its initial meeting two weeks ago, and with many staff members present and openly discussing the issues of race and discipline. The meeting will be occurring every two weeks, with students and parents are encouraged to attend. Eastside. This school year, they have introduced their engaging, advocating, socializing, and transforming time. During this time, students have an hour-long lunch, where students can self-select different clubs, activities, organizations that are offered each day. This time also allows for compulsionaries tutorials led by effective teachers. This time has led to an improvement in the school culture. Garcia Young Men's Leadership Academy. Two of their second-year teachers received an Austin Ed Fund Grant for their project titled Dragonfire Media. They will use the $5,000 to create a media room for the school, marketing, yearbook, and weekly news for their house meetings. This will be an ongoing project through after-school STEM club. Garza High School. Garza unveiled a new mural dedicated to the life of their namesake, Dr. Gonzalo Garza, at the re-institution of Mixed Up Day, a celebration that aligns with their No Place for Hate campus goal. Graham Elementary School. Over the last three rating accountability cycles, Graham Elementary has achieved 15 of 18 possible distinctions, sustaining their tradition of academic excellence and continuing to defy the norm as a Title I campus. Harris Elementary School. At Harris Elementary, to further grow their POC for the 2223 school year, they applied and won an Austin Ed Fund Grant to furnish a designated area where instructional staff feel comfortable to engage in collaborative discussions about teaching and learning. Additionally, they are proud to have established systems that reward and encourage students' growth in areas of character building, attendance, academics, and more. One example is to continue the Early Act First Night Character Program funded by Local Rotary Club as a means to encourage scholars. Hart Elementary School. Hart Elementary School was selected as a recipient of the 2022 Urban Forestry Grant as a UFG recipient. Harris will receive irrigation planning, three years of maintenance for approximately 65 native Texas trees. The UFG covers the cost of all materials and labor for irrigation, trees, plants, and maintenance, with no additional requirements on campus staff and resources. International High School. The transition to Northeast Campus has been amazing, thanks to the warm welcome of the entire Northeast Administration faculty and Northeast community. Our students and faculty feel at home. Hashtag better together. Jordan Elementary School. We are in our second year of implementation of our two-way dual-language program, and we have... We are very proud of the program and the growth our students are making. We are excited about the continued growth of the two-way dual-language at Barbara Jordan. Keeling Middle School. Working with teachers and administrators to develop PBSI systems. LBJ. The LBJ Business Center has been creatively working with students by providing off-campus and on-campus opportunities for all students that promote social skills and leadership development. What is happening in the Business Center, you ask? Business ownership opportunities for students, twice-a-week intern visits, various City of Austin departments for opportunities to intern in the spring with additional trips that will occur until December 5. Interns also receive professional development from the City of Austin. Classroom business office model. Each student has their own office desk set up like an actual office desk. Students host and create various campus activities. Maplewood Elementary School. We have started a one-to-one reading tutoring program during the day for our struggling readers. Each student receives two tutoring times a week. We utilize 50 parent volunteers each week. We are so proud of our very supportive Maplewood community. Norman Sims. Our campus has been strategically working to strengthen our relationship with families and community. We had a large turnout to campus events, PTA meetings, and parent-teacher conferences. Oak Springs. Oak Springs Elementary opened AISD's first Derrick Johnson Discovery Den, which included a revamp of a section in the library with flexible furniture and 1,000 new books for the school's collection. Ortega Elementary. Our campus received a $10,000 Austin Ed Fund Grant that is being used to create a mindfulness room for both students and staff. We are excited and look forward to creating a space where the school community can focus on their well-being and mental health. Ortega also received a $2,500 grant to support outdoor learning. These funds will be used to beautify their campus and vegetable garden and plant butterfly gardens. We are so happy to offer our students experiences that will connect them to nature. On a different note, we have reestablished our student mentoring program post-pandemic. These are once again in-person and offering our student-needed connections and encouragement. Overton Elementary School. Our campus received a $10,000 Austin Ed Fund Grant that is being used to create a STEM makerspace lab. We are excited and look forward to creating a space where project-based learning, critical thinking, innovation, and exploration come alive for staff and students at Overton. Pecan Springs. Pecan Springs is grateful for the half allocation for a Project Lead the Way teacher. This allocation has enabled us to fully launch this comprehensive program for scholars in kindergarten through 5th at our school community. Pickle. Our school recently received a $10,000 PLTW grant to enhance math and science instruction through project-based learning. We are actively participating in 1 Million Minute Reading Challenge, and we have logged 10,390 minutes. The Office of Congressman Lori Doggett will be providing Pickle Elementary School a brand-new flag for Pickle Day this coming October 28. J.J. Pickle's daughter and granddaughter will be in attendance. Saler Means Young Women's Leadership Academy. Saler Means has continued to shine with their high school credit courses. Their leadership pathway has produced incredible young leaders. Their Embass Her Serenity Thacker co-hosted the Inspired the Future with Dr. Mays for the Ed Austin Fund. Wynn Elementary. We rolled our family dual-language classes, where families and those at Harris Elementary can learn English and Spanish together in a format similar to those their children in two-way dual-language classes. Here's my closing words. Support and intervention and focus on the 15% of African-American students who can't read. Opportunities for African-American teachers and staff to thrive and advance. And last but not least, I am putting my full 110% support behind Dr. Kevin Foster for Vice President. Dr. Kevin Foster and I, we butted heads as many a day. But I believe he will be the calm that this board will need and the balance. And to the rest of my colleagues, it's been real.
Thank you again, trustee Anderson, for being one-of-a-kind. Kirsten Ashy is a career educator and parent of a Merkison student and an AISD graduate, currently enrolled at Tulane University. She has served on the AISD board since 2018. Ms. Ashy, who is the child of a teacher and a school board member, graduated from the University of Texas and went on to earn a Special Education Certification and taught early childhood in Texas for many years. She has volunteered in her children's PTAs, including as the president of DAS Elementary School and Merkison Middle School. She also served three years as an original member of Facilities and Bond Planning Advisory Committee, supporting facility planning and the 2017 AISD bond on the FAB PAC, and she was the Community Engagement Subcommittee Chairwoman. Trustee Ashy, thank you for your services to Northwest Austin and the district, and I'm looking forward to one day playing golf with you. Please note that Austin ISD will have a pre-K position ready for you whenever you're ready. At this time, would you like... I would like to acknowledge trustee Ashy to share any final words.
So I had to write them down, and I'm very glad I did write them down, because about 10 minutes ago, my sister walked in with my parents, and I did not know they were coming. So, and as y'all may have... As many of my colleagues know, I have a tendency to be a little emotional, so I'm glad I wrote them down. I'm so honored to have served as the District 4 trustee for the last four years. I have a passion for public education, and I am so grateful to those who live in District 4 that entrusted me with the privilege to sit here on this board. I've met so many wonderful families, and I have enjoyed my time working with this incredible staff. And I would like to take a moment to thank a few people. First, I want to thank all of the wonderful principals and teachers in District 4 and throughout AISD who have been kind enough to share some of their time with me. I'm very grateful for your counsel and your knowledge. You made me a better trustee. Thank you to every single AISD staff member who ever took the time to answer my questions, most of whom who are sitting right out here. I know it took time away from your already hefty workload, and I was humbled by your tentativeness and kindness. You made me a better trustee. Thank you to board members, both past and present. This volunteer job is not an easy one, and every conversation, debate, and dinner was made better by your participation. And I'm so grateful for the friends that I have made. You all made me a better trustee. And now for the part that really is gonna make me cry. I would like to thank my family. First, to my parents, my mom and dad. You raised me in a house that modeled community involvement and respect for public education. Mom, your dedication to teaching for over 30 years was beyond inspirational. And Dad, your service to our small-town community is the reason I even considered the position of trustee. I'm so honored to be your daughter, and I love you both very much. Oh, I've gone into the ugly cry. This is not good. To my sister, thank you for always being such a great listener and such a steadfast supporter. You epitomized the phrase of "I can say something ugly about my sister, but no one else can." I really appreciated your ability to make me laugh in a way that only you can when I really needed it. To my son, Thomas, you are the most patient and considerate kid. You have always been so incredibly understanding of my trustee responsibilities, even when they may have kept me from some of your events. I appreciated your student insights and good conversation about what a trustee actually does. I love you, and I'm incredibly proud to be your mother. And if you don't believe me, just ask all the adults in this room. They have all heard about you all the time. To my daughter, Olivia, who texted me right before this meeting started to tell me that she had managed to find this meeting online. Your words of encouragement and constructive criticism were always helpful. You gave me a perspective that I would not have had otherwise as a high school student during my time as a trustee. The highlight of my trustee term was the honor of handing you your diploma. I love you, and I am incredibly proud to be your mother. And finally, to my husband, Kirk. I don't have the words. You have supported me like no other. You listened to me as I worked through problems, advised me when I needed to see another viewpoint, and hugged me when you knew I didn't need or want to talk but still needed support. I couldn't have done this without you. I tried to come up with a better way and less cliche way to say it, and I couldn't. I love you very, very much. And to my entire family, you all made me a better trustee. As I stepped down this evening, I wish all those continuing on with their terms, and to those stepping into these roles, best wishes. I know you have difficult decisions to face, and I know that you will do it with the thought of our students in mind. Thank you.
Next, we have District 7 trustee Yasmin Wagner. Is a native Texan, University of Texas graduate, and a resident of Austin for 27 years. She's a child of immigrants and is the first Arab-American elected official in Austin. Yasmin is a Bowie parent of one current student and a graduate currently enrolled at the University of Arkansas. She has served as a trustee of the Austin Independent School Board since 2015 and was elected Vice President in 2018. As a longtime community volunteer, her advocacy has centered on women, families and children, which led her to volunteer in campus and district roles when her children were AISD elementary school students. Trustee Wagner previously served as a district appointee to the Texas Association of School Boards, Board of Directors, and was also part of the Council of Urban Boards of Education Steering Committee. At this time, we would like to acknowledge trustee Wagner to share any final words.
Thank you, Dr. Mays. And of course, I have to go after you two beautiful people who have already made me When I joined this board in 2015, I had no idea what the next seven years were gonna hold for me. My children were just 10 and 13 years old at the time, and I thought, I already knew what busy was. I quickly found out that this is a role that you can never adequately prepare for before you're sitting in this seat. This role requires humility, stamina, and always remembering that what can feel like barbs and arrows on the surface is really parents and community members who care passionately about their schools and want the best for their children and everyone else's children. While I'm ready for a really good long rest, I'm also profoundly grateful to have had this role entrusted to me and been entrusted to be a representative of my community. I'm also very proud of so many board accomplishments during my board service. And when I say board accomplishments, it's not a me or an I. When you sit in this seat, it is a team of 10, and it's also the many, many people who stand behind what we're fortunate enough to be able to sit and showcase on this dais. We passed nearly $3.49 billion in bonds. We've moved the district forward with strategic planning. We've opened a dozen new and modernized schools, and many more to come. We've navigated a pandemic, virtual learning, and all of the resulting impacts. We expanded our SEL mental health supports. We implemented a modern and inclusive dress code. We've added stronger LGBTQ TIA+ protections. We shed the Confederate names of our campuses and made equity a key focus of our district. We've walked the halls and the offices of both the US Capitol and the state Capitol, entangled with damaging state law banking. We hired the first Latina superintendent and the first African-American male superintendent. In District 7, we opened Bear Creek Elementary School, and we saw the promises of the 2008 South High School Bond Project finally come to pass. We've made the biggest changes to Bowie High School that the campus has seen since its initial construction almost 40 years ago. I've been proud to serve on the API, TASB, and Q boards as an extension of my service here and learn more about the work of publication, public education on a local, state, and national level. Most importantly, I've also seen this board work hard to ensure we center students and student outcomes in everything we do every day. And the brightest highlight of my time here has been standing on a stage, shaking the hands of thousands of graduates as they crossed and got their diplomas. This role has afforded me the opportunity to better know my city, its history, its challenges, and its beauty in ways that I can only view as a profound gift. More than anything, I will greatly miss the people I am fortunate to work with and will treasure the memories and friendships I feel so fortunate to have made. To the new and continuing board members, I ask that you lead with grace. Remember that the loudest voices often don't represent all voices. Start slowly, because there is so much to learn that you won't know before you sit in these seats. Hold fast to the tenet that you are here to govern and not to manage. The most impactful thing that you can do as a trustee is to hold space for good work to happen and support the talented people who are doing it. Thank you to the families who shared their stories and their confidence in me. Thank you to the appointees who graciously took my calls and agreed to share the representation of District 7. Thank you to the many board members I have served with who have given their time and talents in service of this district. Thank you to the staff and administration I have been fortunate to know and work with for your patience with me as I continue to learn my way every day. I started to write a list of the names of people I wanted to thank, but the list got way too long to read tonight. I'm gonna carry all of you in my heart. I'm going to carry all of you in my heart, and I will miss seeing you regularly. You will forever have my gratitude for giving so much of yourselves to the work of this district and the students of this district. I hope our paths will cross soon and often. Sorry, I think I'm going to tussle with you for the ugly cry award tonight. Finally, and most importantly, I want to thank my family. My husband and my children Holden and Isabel have been my biggest supporters. And despite all of the time and energy that this role has pulled away from me, being able to be the mother and the wife I want to be for them, they've never once complained. Every late board meeting, every school event, every pickup that I couldn't do, my husband and I passing each other like ships in the night, never once have complained. And always their steadfast support. I couldn't have done this without them. So, thank you all for letting me hold this seat for seven years, and I look forward to continuing with you in other ways and other forms. Thank you.
Finally, District Six trustee Geronimo Rodriguez was appointed to the AISD Board of Trustees on June 12, 2017, to represent District Six and was elected vice president by his fellow trustees on June 26, 2017. He was elected to a full new term that next year and chosen as the president by his fellow trustees on May 21, 2018. He worked as a farm worker and his parents, with his parents and attended high school in the evenings. Mr. Rodriguez understands and promotes the philosophy of expecting every child to graduate from high school, ready for college and career in life. Geronimo Rodriguez earned a bachelor's degree from St. Edward's University and a doctor of jurisprudence from the University of Texas School of Law. Prior to his time on the board, he served as the tri-chair of the 2008 Austin ISD Citizen Bond Advisory Committee and was a previous member of the National Parent Teacher Association Board of Directors. He's the first young man that I've seen get a lifetime achievement award. At this time, I would like to play a short, three-minute video highlighting trustee Rodriguez.
Receiving the lifetime achievement award makes me feel incredibly grateful for my parents. I still remember the summer of 1982, and it's August, and I'm sitting there with my brothers and my sister, and I have just gone through the eighth grade. And I'm telling my brothers and sisters how I am not going to graduate from high school and go to college because we would work two weeks in September in the cucumbers in the Pacific Northwest. We would move to Hermiston, Oregon and go to school there until Thanksgiving. We would go down to South Texas to Far San Juan Alamo High School, and we would leave there in spring break to go to the Yakima Valley to go to school in Mapton, Washington. And that trip was all these different schools and that colleges looked at your ninth through 12th grade records, your transcript, and they saw that if you did good grades, you could go to college. And I wasn't going to be one of those students that was going to go to college. Unbeknownst to me, my mom and dad were listening. The next thing I know, a few days later, they're asking us to pack up. Each one of us got a garbage bag that we could fill our clothes in to put in the back of the truck so that we could go to the next crop, the next camp. And they asked us to fill those bags up with our clothes in August, and we're all asking like, what are we doing? What's going on? So, they didn't say anything. We get in the truck, and we're driving, and we're thinking we're going to Oregon, and we drive past Oregon, and then my mom starts telling me. They overheard the conversation that I was having with my brother, my brothers and my sister, and they decided right then and there that they were going to break down barriers, that they were going to give an opportunity for their kids so that they could choose to work in the fields, or choose to work in the fields of education, or choose to work in the fields of law. And they did it. And because of them, I was the first one in my family to graduate from high school, college, law school. My brother served in the first Persian Gulf War. My sister is a teacher, teaching others. My two youngest brothers, they sing in the Hano bands, and they work, and they're giving back. And my son, my son has graduated from the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. He now serves as a deputy sheriff in South Texas, protecting the community that I came from, that he came from, that my parents came from. That's how I feel about seeing my parents.
So, I'll pause right there. He truly is a player that leaves it all on the field. And so, trustee Rodriguez, would you like to share a few words?
Yes. By the way, just so for our health and safety, folks, these napkins have not been shared by each one of us. These have been individual ones. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Mays. I have to take a breath here for a second. You know, this last week, I'm hopeful that every one of you got to spend time with your family and friends. For me, it was the first time that I had a few days to reflect on everything that we've gone through as a district. From Friday, February 13, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., because I still remember that day when all of the board was here, I had just arrived from Ireland with my wife who's here, and I was not allowed to come to the board meeting because it was the beginning of COVID and we had voted to close schools down. And I reflect back on that because there's a couple of things that I want to share. I think one of them is how important I want you all to know that relationships, teamwork, and collaboration are the only way we get big things done, and we have been getting things, big things, done in our district. I'd be remiss if I didn't start off by just first thanking my parents. You got to see in that video the reason why I decided to serve in the first place. And Dr. Mays, by the way, any rumors of me retiring from everything in this world are very, are very false, very, very false. But I appreciate the words. I also want to thank my son. I think he's taught me a lot about serving others and making sure that what our obligation responsibility is to remove barriers so that other individuals like ourselves are able to succeed in life. And to my wife who's here tonight, I just want you to know that I will be home before 2:00 a.m. And Letitia guarantees that, and so do I. I also want you to know that I really believe that public service is an honorable profession, and every single day that you all come and serve our students is an honorable, it's an honorable profession, but also an honorable thing that you do for our students here in our community. And I am just so grateful to have been able to serve the board and serve all of you all in this role, including all of the schools in District Six and the entire district. And I am so proud of the board for speaking up and standing up for local control, for the value of public education, and for supporting the $2.4 billion bond package that was recently passed. I also want to share that I thought the hardest thing that all of us would navigate through would be COVID, and I was wrong. I think the hardest thing is navigating out of COVID, and whether it's learning losses, mental health, special education, all of the issues that are here. I think it's really important to take a moment about why we're doing the things that we do. And I think I mentioned this before. I think one of the reasons why I decided to serve was to remove barriers so that people like myself would be able to succeed and flourish to their fullest potential. And there is always more work to do. And I want to thank all of you for allowing me to be a part of the AISD legacy, the AISD history. I think a generation from now, I know our names of this board will be on all of the schools that are equitably being funded, especially in our Title I areas. But you know what's even more important than that is that kids and parents won't even remember that our names are on the board, on those buildings. They won't care about that. What they will care about is that they love those schools, that they love serving those students, and that they love Austin ISD, and that is what's going to matter. So, while this chapter closes for a number of us up here, I'm confident that we have left this organization better than we found it, and we will continue to serve, love the mission of this organization. And I can't thank you all enough for the last five years of being able to co-create with you all.
So, to the four of you, on behalf of Austin ISD and the City of Austin, we thank you for your service, we thank you for your sacrifice, and with that being said, trustee Rodriguez, finish with the recognition. So, thank you all. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Mays. I think if it's okay, we're going to, I think you had a request that I wanted to honor, which was, Dr. Mays asked that we have a picture of him with the current board. And if you all don't mind, we'll take a little bit of a break and take that picture and then come right back. Thank you all very much. You know, Dr. Mays, before we open it up to any other trustees, I just wanted to say that, you know, Dr. Mays and I, in our conversations, we usually talk about not giving each other any surprises. But I'll tell you, the only surprise I got tonight was the video. I think I had shared it with them, and thank you, thank you for that. I didn't expect to have so much emotion around that, but I really appreciate you. Really appreciate you. I want to, at this time, want to open it up to any other trustees who would like to share any comments. Oh, and trustee Foster.
So, as we were walking back, trustee Anderson absolutely shocked me. She said that after all this time, this was going to be your last time on the dais so that all of the sitting trustees draw our words out so that she can be here as long as possible this evening. No, I will, we will try to be brief while also showing our love and affection for you all. First of all, thank you all for your emotion. There's a sterility that we are invited to that robs us of our humanity, robs us of our souls. And, you know, President Rodriguez, I used to watch, I'd be like, oh, he's about to choke up again. And then, now that I'm here, and I know you, and I know your heart, and I know your soul, every time you get choked up, it makes me mad still because I now am getting choked up. And so, I actually thank you for the permission to be my emotional self. So, to trustee Ashi, who, you know, we sit next to each other, there are two things I wanted to just quickly raise up. One is her stewardship of the policy committee was a model, not just for collegiality, but for listening. And so, trustee Boswell, myself, and trustee Ashi would sit in these meetings, and we would be working through our handbook or working through this or that policy. And trustee Ashi was always clear to take time to ensure that our range of perspectives was heard and listened to, and to the absolute extent possible incorporated into our solutions. That was a model that I took forth. The second piece that was an absolute model was visiting an elementary school with you early on, and the way you listened to parents with the range of perspectives they had, and sometimes it was an opportunity to correct, oh, but actually this, never did that. Just simply sat in the moment and honored parents and families by being a listener. And in that moment, I just learned so much. So, thank you. Trustee Anderson, now this is where I'll get choked up. I am in absolute awe of you. You are the redemption of our nation. Our school district did not serve you well the first time around. Then you had the audacity to run for office without a high school diploma and sit on a school board. How dare you? And then while you were on this school board, working full-time and serving at night, got your high school diploma from Gonzalo Garza, and then followed that up by getting your bachelor's degree while you were sitting here. I have learned from you. I have learned from your example. You have brought an optimism to me that I did not have before because I see, and dare I put it in this way, the excellence that is baked into blackness in this country, what it means to push through when you are done wrong and to get it right, make it right, and then as you make it right, serve others at the same time. I will love you for the example that you provide. I will love you for the example that you provide. Trustee Wagner, you have given so much. Very early on, when I first got to know you, it was through observation. And we were going through all these closure things. And I was not happy, and a lot of us were not happy. But one thing I noticed was your presence. And sitting through the moment of community, absolute upset, and insisting on, at the very least, being present to hear it so that you would understand that whatever decision you made, you had heard the voices of community. That meant a great deal to me. Then seeing you on the board and knowing that you basically came straight from the day job to here brought a deeper level of, an even deeper level of respect for who you are and what you have done. You have given so much and have, have earned the rest, the relaxation, the family time, or quite likely the continued service that you, I'm sure you will live into. And trustee Rodriguez, as with the other trustees, I learned so much from you. You have clarity in your approach to stewardship. And you would often have strong opinions but not voice those opinions because you understood that in your role, that bully pulpit can overshadow other voices. And so you systematically and strategically set back. You still exerted your influence, you still had your say, but you did it in a way that allowed voice and were insistent on everybody being heard. You were a calm steward. You were a careful steward. You were a purposeful steward. I will always remember this outgoing board as the board that set this district up for success. Getting through COVID with the hostility of the state, with the, the confusion and anger and hurt and fear of our families and community. This board was careful, was considerate, and even made decisions that, to some extent, put us at personal risk. But they were the right decisions. And you were among the folks that led us through that. Then right on the back of that, getting through a $2.44 billion bond, having it pass at what, a 72% rate? 73%, excuse me, Dr. Mays, 73%? And not only was it a large bond, okay, whatever. What it was, was a bond that provides for our entire community to grow and be healthy. It was equity by design, and it was worked through, not without our community. Our community was huge in it. But you all were the stewards. So I thank you all for everything you've given us.
Thank you, trustee Foster. Trustees?
Just wanna share gratitude to each of you for serving so individually and thoughtfully and well. I wrote a note to each of you that says all the things I can't say without crying. And I'm crying anyway a little bit. But anyway, just wanted to thank you. I appreciate all that you did before I was on the board, when I was with the Austin Council of PTAs, serving in a different way. And that each of you was so present and available and engaged in so many ways, supporting so much. Really thank the conversations I had with some of you before I decided to and the clarity and honesty that you shared. And, and the availability of each of you to be here for all of us as we learn to serve and, and the model that you gave. And, and all that each of you has done. And, and really, I feel incredibly grateful to live in a city where people step up to serve and where people stick around after they leave the board to serve, continuing to love the district and to be a presence in so many ways. So I, I am grateful that I will continue to have you guys in my life. And Kristin, I think you said when we joined that it was like a big family. And I've had so much fun with you guys, even in the midst of some really hard things. And just grateful to be connected with you and grateful to share this district and this city with each of you. So thank you.
I'm really gonna miss working with all of you. I've learned so much from each of you. Kristin, I still have you in my phone. And you know, it says, nice Fab Pack lady. I think about the first time I've met each one of you, and I really remember those moments. And, and I've learned a lot from, from each of you. So thank you. Thank you for serving. Thank you for teaching. Thank you for, to use Kristin's words, making me a better trustee. And, and you have left the district much better and much stronger than it was when you entered. So appreciate it, and you're welcome back anytime.
I'm gonna keep it short too, because I know you don't wanna get out at 2:00 in the morning. So, but thank you very much for serving and for, for being a good leader for our community in your districts, serving the families in the whole district. We were not just specific to our own sometimes. But I really appreciate all your input. I learned a lot from all of you. And I think that you have really helped us to be where we are, to be stronger. But now there's a lot of stuff new, and you are leaving us with that. It's not nice. But we'll miss you, and I have all of you on my phone. Thank you.
All right, Letitia, I'm gonna get out my binder and be here for a while. So no, I just wanna say thank you to each of you, regardless of whether we agreed 5% of the time, 95% of the time, maybe none of the time. I especially, I, I, this is sincere. Like, I actually really appreciate the times, Letitia, when me and you, whether it was in public or private, when we had our conversations. Because I, I truly believe that, you know, we can learn more when we disagree than when we agree. And so, but also to trustee Ashi, trustee Wagner, trustee Rodriguez, just the fact that you do have to sacrifice, you know, your, your time, your energy, time with your family, time for your jobs or other priorities, right? And that's a huge sacrifice. And so hopefully you'll get a little bit of rest. And like Kevin, like trustee Foster said, you know, I'm sure we'll see y'all again. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanna thank you all and thank our now former trustees, Anderson, Ashi, Wagner, and how do I say, and myself, and Rodriguez. We're now going to move on to the swearing in of trustees. And during the swearing in, only invited family members and friends may join those being sworn in. Our first trustee is, oh, by the way, I don't know if I told you, y'all have to stay here for this part. And then we transition over. But our first trustee is Candace Hunter, newly elected trustee for District 1. Trustee Hunter will be ceremonially, ceremonially sworn in by her mother, Betty Young. Welcome.
I'm gonna drink some water real quick. Me and the kids were singing "Back in Black" on the way over. And I really got into it.
I, Candace Hunter, do solemnly
I, Candace Hunter, do solemnly
swear that I will faithfully execute the duties
swear that I will faithfully execute the duties
of the Office of Trustee Single Member District 1
of the Office of Trustee Single Member District 1
of the Austin Independent School District
of the Austin Independent School District
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas
and I will, to the best of my ability
and I will, to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws of the United States
the Constitution and laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God
I love you. Congratulations.
Trustee Hunter, would you, trustee Hunter, would you like to say a few words? Is there a timer for that? I'm just kidding.
I said a lot over the years in one minute.
Now you'll have more than one minute.
That's okay. I am really very thankful. Like these trustees, I've been with them till 1:00 in the morning. I've just been on this side of the, the dais. And my family has allowed me to do that. My husband has allowed me to do that. And many of you, we're already so familiar with one another. But I am here today. The reason my mother sworn me in is because in 2015, when I needed to step away from teaching full-time in Austin ISD to serve my son, who was then a student at Northeast Early College High School, formerly Reagan, I could not work full-time. I could not do the things I needed to do. And to my children, poverty was new. And so I had a great support system when I needed to do advocacy work and my kids needed to be picked up, or they needed to be fed, or if I just didn't have money to pay my light bill. I always, I always had a safety net. Real quick, this is not how this was supposed to be for me. When I went to school in the early 90s, I went to college. I was a political science major, and I was supposed to be a lawyer. And after three and a half years, I called home afraid and scared and told my mom, I changed my major to education. And I held my breath because I was waiting for the big blow. And she said, finally, you have always supposed to be a teacher. And I'm glad that I had the opportunity to serve in that capacity for Austin ISD, that I got to serve in the capacity of advocate. That when I decided to step up, people like Charlotte and Sharon and Nadia and my whole crew, we're called the Cool Kids, in case y'all don't know, helped me to become part of my new pack, which are the New Kids on the Block. Did y'all see that? I named us that. So I'm so very thankful for all of you, for all of your support, for all of the people who believed I could do this even when I didn't think I was gonna make it. I appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll have trustee Catherine Whitley-Chu, newly elected trustee for District 4. She will be ceremonially sworn in by Kevin Anderson, a sped teacher at Gus Garcia Young Men's Leadership Academy and previous co-teacher of trustee Chu.
I, Catherine Whitley-Chu
I, Catherine Whitley-Chu
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office
that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office
of trustee, single member, District 4
of trustee, single member, District 4
of the Austin Independent School District
of the Austin Independent School District
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas
and will, to the best of my ability
and will, to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws of the United States
the Constitution and laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God.
And trustee Whitley-Chu, we'd welcome you to say a few words.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I wanna thank my family who's not here today, and maybe they're watching on TV. So Vivian and Jack, my little ones, that are home with Nick, who was supposed to swear me in but wasn't able to today. He's home with the kids. And to thank my parents, my mom is home with them. So they're, they're the reason I want to do this and the reason I'm, I'm able to do this here today. And to, to my dad at home as, as well. So I also, I wanna thank Kevin Anderson for coming up here. He found out very last minute. And so he was my co-teacher at Pierce. So I was at Pierce, those were my first years teaching. And he always had my back. And so I knew he'd have my back today, and he came up here today. And together, him and I, we, the kids always knew that we had their back. And that's what I'm gonna continue to do. That's why we're here, to have the kids back, to, to take care of the kids first. And to take care of those kids first, we have to take care of the people who are on the front line supporting our kids. From the first person they see that day, the first face when they get on the bus and are driven to school, and the person who feeds them breakfast, the person says hi to them as they come in in the front office, the person who puts a Band-Aid on them or even more serious, you know, they, they get hurt at school, that help us feel safe sending our kiddos there, to the TAs and the teachers in the classroom. That is, that's who I am, and that's, we are all here to support. We're gonna flip that on, from the bottom up. So it's not the school trustees down, it's the school trustees up to the kids. So thank you so much. I always have your ear and I always have your back. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will have trustee Andrew Gonzalez, newly elected trustee for District 6. He will be ceremonially sworn in by his mother, Cynthia Gonzalez.
Son, it's my hope that you will
This is gonna be a mess.
That you will just act for all of Austin, but specifically the children. May God guide you and protect you. We are so proud of you. I, Andrew Gonzalez, do solemnly swear
I, Andrew Gonzalez, do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute the duties
that I will faithfully execute the duties
of the Office of Trustee Single Member District 6
of the Office of Trustee Single Member District 6
of the Austin Independent School District
of the Austin Independent School District
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas
and will, to the best of my ability
and will, to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws of the United States
the Constitution and laws of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God.
Trustee Gonzalez, would you like to say a few words?
I'll try. I, like trustee Hunter said, my mother was an AISD employee for over three decades. She taught elementary school. And I also was not an education major initially. I was a quadruple major in government, Latin American Studies, and history and something else. I can't remember. But I had no plans to, to be a teacher. And when I told my mom that that's what I was gonna do after I worked part-time as an avid tutor in AISD, she, she said, why? And I, I, I understand. And, and I'm here because of her and the sacrifices that she and the rest of my family, who are also here, have made. And I wanna thank you all for everything that you've done to support me. I, I wanna thank the other trustee candidates who were a support network as we were moving through this whole thing. It was so scary and so crazy and very, very time-consuming, especially as a working person. I wanna thank the outgoing trustees. Trustee Ashi, I'm a huge nerd. And I was kinda starstruck to meet you in the hallway earlier. And I couldn't say anything. And trustee Anderson, you have such a generous spirit and the wisdom and advice that you shared with me in just a few minutes. and the wisdom and advice that you shared with me in just a few minutes before we came in here. Trustee Wagner, getting to hear from you in the executive session that you all invited us to, which was unprecedented. And you already have set us up for success. And trustee Rodriguez, who has given so much and whose story I identify with in so many different ways because it's also the story of my family and what we've been through in this state and in this city. And I want to thank my other fellow teachers who I worked with, who are still serving in the classrooms. And we're here tonight even after a long day of working at the end of, beginning of December, almost to the winter break. I promise to continue to work with you to make this district into everything that we know that it can be. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you all.
Now we will have trustee David Kaufman, newly elected trustee for District Seven. And he will be ceremonially sworn in by his daughter, Isabella Hernandez Kaufman.
I wanted to start off by saying I'm really proud of you. And yeah, okay. I, David Kaufman.
I, David Kaufman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of Trustee Single Member District Seven.
The duties of the Office of Trustee Single Member District Seven.
Of the Austin Independent School District of the State of Texas.
Of the Austin Independent School District of the State of Texas.
And will do the best to my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Trustee Kaufman.
All right. I actually took some notes this time, so I have to read a little. But I do want to thank everybody. That was, I've often been sworn at, but that's the first time I've been sworn in. I'm honored to have been elected by the voters in District Seven. And I'm eager to serve the students, families, community, and employees of all of AISD. I do want to thank all the outgoing trustees for your service, especially trustee Wagner for your seven years of service in District Seven. I want to thank the returning trustees for the warm welcome that you've given us. And I want to thank my fellow new trustees for your inspirational campaigns and for helping raise my level of thinking of how to do this work. I want to give very special thanks to the thousands of students, families, teachers, principals, and other employees that I've had the privilege of knowing over the years. This district is dear to my heart. This is my 19th year as an AISD parent. This begins, today begins my 18th year of wearing an AISD badge. The first time I'm not getting paid to wear one, but it's it's just as good. I look forward to continuing the work of the outgoing board and the interim superintendent to promote the safety, well-being, and academic achievement of all students in the district regardless of zip code. I look forward to providing support to help our district to achieve the intent of special education and bilingual education laws, which is to ensure access, opportunity, and ultimately academic success for all of our students. In a great school district, we have to put students first. But that does not mean that adults come last, like Catherine said. We have to take care of the adults who take care of the kids. I look forward to treating the adults in our system, employees and families, with respect and truly including their voices in decision-making and problem-solving. I encourage all students, families, community members, employees to get involved. Pay attention to what this board does. Ask questions. Let us hear your voices and hold us accountable. Muchisimas gracias a todos, and I'm glad to be here.
Thank you. Now we will have trustee Arthee Singh, re-elected trustee for At-Large Position Nine. And she will be ceremonially sworn in by her daughter Anika Singh.
I, Arthee Singh, do solemnly swear.
I, Arthee Singh, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of At-Large Position Nine Trustee.
Of the Office of At-Large Position Nine Trustee.
Of the Austin Independent School District.
Of the Austin Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Trustee Singh.
So first, I want to say thank you to our staff and to our teachers for making AISD such an amazing place to send my own kids and making me love this district so much that I wanted to actually be here till 2:00 in the morning a couple of times a month to serve it. So thank you so much. I've got to say thank you to my family, especially to that handsome Indian dude right there, my husband Ranjiv. He knows, he knows everything about all y'all. Sorry. But it's mostly good, believe it or not. And when young people ask me, like, "Hey, what should I look for in a life partner?" I always say the same thing, which is, "Look for somebody who is going to bring out the best in you and can encourage you to do things that you never thought were possible." And that's what he's done for me. And my girls have been just so supportive. And so just, I could not have done this without them. And I think all the spouses need to just form a support club, really, because I know you guys work almost as hard as we do. But I'm just, you know, really, again, grateful to the outgoing board. I appreciate your service. I've learned so much from you all. I want to thank Dr. Mays for just your leadership. You have really helped our district in the short time that you've been here. So thank you. I'm really excited about, I just want to share, like, one of the biggest highlights of my service so far. There are actually two. One was when we adopted a scorecard that had disaggregated metrics and really operationalized our belief that every child, regardless of their background, could achieve at high levels. That was the first time we did that as a district. The second thing is when we, as a board, unanimously adopted the bond package. And we all went out afterwards and had a couple of non-alcoholic beverages. And just celebrated the fact that equity by design, led by Dr. Stephanie Hawley, it works. And we couldn't have done it without you. And we couldn't have done it without Mathias, without Ed, Dr. Mays, our Bond Steering Committee, Long Range Planning Committee, our Human Encyclopedia, Jacob Reach, and the comms team, and so many others. So I'm just really excited. I'm optimistic. I think that this board coming in is very strong. We have audacious goals for our kids. And with your support, all these people in this room and all the people out there, we're going to meet them. I'm confident of that. And let's just get this work done. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Singh. Trustee Anderson has asked me to recognize her, and so I'm going to do that for the last time.
I just wanted to say, this is not goodbye. This is, "I will see you around."
So we're at the end of this part. We will now take a short break as we prepare to welcome our four new trustees to the dais. And as we do that, I also want to add my thanks to Dr. Mays for his leadership and friendship over the years. So thank you so much, and to all of y'all as well. Thank you.
Hello, welcome back and thank you for your patience. As Secretary of the Board, I will act as the presiding officer moving into our next items. We are so excited to welcome four new trustees to the dais. Hey, y'all. We've got Catherine Whitley-Chu, Candace Hunter, David Kaufman, and Andrew Gonzalez. Welcome. So with our new trustees in place, we will now move on to the rest of the meeting. Sorry, y'all, there's like six more hours of this. The Texas Education Code requires that at the first meeting after each election and qualification of trustees, which is tonight, the board shall organize itself by selecting officers. As the board will need to take action to select officers, we will first move to public testimony for our action item before we move into the executive session to discuss officers and return to the dais to vote on officer positions. So we will now move to public testimony for action items. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio-record their remarks. Tonight, we have one person who signed up for public testimony and 11 who recorded testimony. We will now move to in-person testimony. In order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. As you come to the microphone, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise, that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. We ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. Tonight's in-person speaker is Louis Malfarro. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead. Mic, please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Louis Malfarro. I'm the Associate Executive Director of Austin Voices for Education and Youth. I come to express my personal gratitude for all the AISD trustees, especially those whose formal service on the board ended this evening. And I congratulate the new board. When I look at this board, I don't just see a college professor, a community organizer, an editor, an entrepreneur, a teacher, a school leader, a social worker, an accountant. I see a group of elected officials whose responsibility has been given to them by the Austin community to lead this school district. So my advice to you as you start out as a new board, don't spend a lot of time talking to people who want to tell you what you can't do. Those of us who know that this school board can and will lead with strength are here to stand with you tonight and going forward to be your partners in the important work you will be doing. Congratulations to all of you. Best of luck, and we look forward to the partnership.
Thank you. We will now play the recorded message for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent, AISD staff. This is Ann Hardeman-Tai, former trustee with Austin ISD. I am speaking regarding Agenda Item 6.1. First, a huge thank you to the outgoing trustees with whom I served during my tenure on the board, President Rodriguez, Vice President Wagner, trustee Anderson, and trustee Ashi. I very much enjoy working with all of you on my critical issues, important to the support and success of students, staff, their families, and community members. You understand the meaning of public servant. I wish you all the best as you exit out of public official status. For those of you who continue their service on the board and who join the board for the first time tonight, I offer the following as you deliberate tonight. Board officers, the frontline of trustee work. They work very closely with the superintendent and executive staff. The president must be someone who has experience in public school board governance and in particular in AISD governance. You have developed respectful and collaborative working relationships with the Austin City Council, Travis County Commissioners Court, the Travis County Legislative Delegation, and with local community leaders. The vice president should have those same skills and relationships and be ready to lead and be present at meetings when the president cannot be there. And the board secretary should also have those skills in addition to having the ability to monitor board meeting minutes and communicate effectively with the superintendent and staff to shape meeting agendas. All three officers should be expected to work collaboratively together to govern strategically within the framework of the very complex Texas and Austin ISD education policies and willing to include all trustees in their planning and communicate effectively and respectfully with fellow trustees.
I'm Elizabeth Thompson. I am the patent professor of African Black Studies at the University of Texas. And I'm also an AISD parent. And I'm calling to speak to Item 6, Board Officer Selection, on behalf of Kevin Michael Foster as AISD Board President. I've known him for 10 years and in my experience both as a colleague and also a parent of AISD children, he's been very supportive. He was a great interim chair of our Department of Black Studies last year. And he's been really helpful to my family as we've navigated trying to find excellent opportunity for our son as we believe in public schools. He was, in both instances, he's a calm and effective and energetic and knowledgeable black leader who serves our community very well. And we're lucky to have him in the role he's in now, but it would be even better if he serves as the AISD Board President.
Hey, this is Dr. Harvey, calling on Agenda Item Number 6. I'm a former Austin ISD student, employee, and had the pleasure of working with Dr. Kevin Foster in East Austin, Keating Middle School, after-school programs and throughout the community. And would definitely recommend him for Board President. Leadership and dedication community, the greater Austin community is looking to him. So just want to get that recommendation. Dr. Chris Harvey. I work for Lainer ISD, and I'm also the mayor for the city of Lainer. Thank you.
Hi, I am product of the district's segregated schools, class of 61. Every adult I interacted with was supportive and encouraging. The black male role models encouraged male students to be the best people they could be. The Chair of the Board is an extremely important and critical position for educators, staff, students, and parents, especially students who need positive role models. Because of his competence, commitment, and caring for the students of this district, I'm recommending Dr. Kevin Foster to be elected Chair of the Board of Trustees. Have a great day.
My name is Carl Spencer, President of the 100 Black Men of Austin. And I'm calling on behalf of Dr. Kevin Foster. I know he's running for officer position. And it'd be very vital to continue to have Dr. Kevin Foster as a part of an officer for Austin ISD. He brings great talent, great information, great passion. He's committed to Austin ISD. And when we think about diversity, equity, and inclusion, we also look at Kevin Foster as being that asset as an officer at Austin ISD. It's with great pleasure to leave this voicemail message on behalf of Dr. Kevin Foster. And it's my hope that he will continue to be an officer at Austin ISD. Thank you so much for your time and have a great day.
Hello, my name is Gregory Harrington. I am the President of the Gamma Eight Llama Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. And I just want to throw my support behind trustee Kevin Foster. Becoming an officer, as we transition away from some of the past leaders such as Geronimo, trustee Geronimo Rodriguez, I would like the continuation of the leadership. You know, at the end of the day, I think it's important to allow the new board members to come in and learn, but with the guidance of somebody who's already been in that position. We know it's a path to become a trustee. But trustee Kevin Foster, I personally think he, not just an officer, specifically the president, I think it's important for him to serve in that capacity because of his leadership and his knowledge and community and experience thus far. So please support him as the leader of the board, AISD board. Totally, once again, Gregory Harrington, supporting trustee Kevin Foster to be an officer, specifically the president.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Johnston. I'm a 5th grade dual-language teacher at Betta's Elementary. I am calling in regard to Action Item 6.1, the election of board officers. First, I'm extremely hopeful and excited about the newly-elected school board. I look forward to what our district will be under your leadership. I know that tonight you will be selecting a board president, and I encourage you to vote for trustee Arthee Singh. I'm confident in the leadership of trustee Singh due to the history she has on our board, advocating for the community I work with. Most important to me was our collaboration regarding dual-language education. Trustee Singh's support behind the scenes with my colleagues and me, as well as on the dais, to pass bilingual education policy. the dais, to pass bilingual education policy benefited the families I work with and the students in my classroom. She has continually listened to our needs and responded, ensuring that our district is one of equity. I hope you will elect trustee Singh as Board President.
Hello, my name is David Delion, and I am a teacher here with AISD, calling about Action Item 6.1. I'm calling to voice my support for Arty Singh to become the school board's new president. Over the past four years, I've been very impressed with her support of our school district, our staff, our students, our families, watching her speak and engage with other school board members and staff, district staff during the school board meeting, has been very inspiring. I appreciate that she's not afraid to ask some of the more difficult questions, to answer some of the difficult questions, and I think, you know, with her experience as a school board member and the ways in which she has proven herself, she would make a wonderful school board president. Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Johnson. I live in District 1. I am a community member, and the reason for my call is because of what is on the agenda of selecting a new AISD president. I am supporting trustee Foster. I believe he represents everything that we need in a Board President, someone who is knowledgeable, someone who will be fair, someone who is trustworthy, and above all, someone who will be transparent, somebody that we can identify with. And so my vote is for him, and I hope your vote will be as well.
Good evening, Board. My name is Ray Hudson. I'm a proud bus driver at Austin ISD. I am calling about Agenda Item 6.1, the election of Board Officers. Leadership on the Board is very important. My personal experience with Arty Singh has inspired me to call you and encourage you to support her as a Board President. When we were struggling in Transportation Department, trustee Singh found it important to come to our terminal and visit us, listen to us, and to share, for us to share our experience, lived experience, with her regarding being a bus driver in this district. I would hope that you would follow or find it in your heart to support her or elect her as Board President. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Dwayne Alexander, a community member, calling on behalf of Agenda Item 6.1 regarding action to select Board Officers. I would like to throw my support behind trustee Foster, who has proven to be a dedicated servant in his quest to promote and support student outcomes in various capacities. His support for students, staff, and this is unwavering, and I believe that his leadership will be integral to this Board for years to come. Thank you.
This concludes public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? We've got all different people here. I'm like, wait. Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you, trustees. We will now move into the executive session to consider Board Officers. I did have a question for our Board Counsel, there was, and also for trustees, there was a suggestion to talk about this. We have two executive sessions planned for this evening, but in consideration of our staff, so they don't have to stay too late. We were thinking about having this, that executive session happen at this moment as well, the second one. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's, you can take items out of order.
Is that okay with my colleagues? Okay.
Both of them? So both executive sessions would be?
At once. Well, staff will be involved with the executive session items as well. Dr. Reach, did you have a comment or consideration for us?
I was asking, to be clear, what items would be taken in the first session?
Okay.
So it would be all of them?
I think so. Dr. Mays, was that your recommendation?
Yeah, I think it was all of them except for number four.
Okay, yeah, it was all except for the discussion on the interim superintendent search. Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Okay, so we will now move into the executive session to consider Board Officers and the other items we just discussed.
Sure. So then, just for clarity, we would be taking up items, we would be taking up Items 5.1 and 18.1, but we will return to open session and conclude 18.1 at the end of the meeting? So we won't complete 18.1?
Correct. Correct. Just keeping you on your toes. So we will move to, so we'll recess the open meeting at 7:56 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. Thank you. So we will now reconvene an open meeting at 9:30 PM. And so we did, as we mentioned, we did meet an executive session. However, some of the discussions went a little longer than we thought they would, so we are actually going to do the Board Officer Executive Session after the regular Board Information Session meeting. So that has just been pushed to the end of the agenda out of consideration for our staff, so they don't have to stay too late tonight. So thank you very much to my colleagues for agreeing to do that. So, let's see here. Okay, so next, we have an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time, allow speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing. We have time for up to 60 speakers, and as a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings of the Board to hear from public about agenda items for consideration and vote. This is an opportunity for the Board to take part in active listening, and while we wish we could respond and provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to audio record their remarks. We will now play the recorded messages for public comments, so please listen carefully.
My name is Gary Farmer. I'm a homeowner in the AISD school district. I also own a small business, which is located within the district as well. Therefore, I'm a taxpayer and a longtime supporter, by the way, of AISD initiatives, including the most recent bond program. I'm calling to ask for your support of NXP and their quest to seek a Chapter 313 agreement. I believe this would vastly benefit the school district, create millions of dollars for the school district and its teachers and the kids, not subject to recapture, by the way, approximately $65 million. It will also put Austin in a position to attract billions of dollars from the Federal CHIPS Act, bring that money to Austin, and help build out our semiconductor ecosystem. Austin, Texas, with your good judgment and help, can lead the country in semiconductor manufacturing, if not the world. And perhaps most importantly, this will create many, many, many jobs for families that live in your district and hopefully create internships and other opportunities for your students. So respectfully, I would ask for your support of NXP and--
Good morning, AISD trustees and Dr. Mays. My name is Rick Whiteley. I'm a resident of Austin for about 45 years. Both my children attended AISD schools, and I'm calling this morning on behalf of the Austin Chamber and Opportunity Austin to thank you for your service and the opportunity to share my support for the Chapter 13 Agreement with NXP. NXP has a long track record of investing in our schools, nonprofits, and environment. They've been an excellent corporate citizen and have done this while supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives to provide educational and career opportunities for various students. Your support of Chapter 13 Agreement will provide a lot of money, $63.5 million in funding to AISD, which is not subject to recapture. We all know how important that is. That'll help us invest more in teachers and students. It'll help us secure some of the CHIPS Funding Act with maybe up to $2.8 billion for NXP's proposed expansion, and it'll create hundreds of good jobs and great semiconductor production to help our region grow more even in that area. Your vote to support this agreement will reflect your sound financial stewardship, alignment, and strategic plan, so win for Austin ISD, parents, students, and our community. Thank you very much for--
My name is Carlota Garcia with Our Lady of Guadalupe Catholic Church and Central Texas Interfaith, testifying against NXP's Chapter 313 application. The Texas statute governing Chapter 313 specifies that when voting on Chapter 313 deals, school board members have a fiduciary responsibility to serve both the interests of the school district and the interests of the state. Section 313.025 Subsection F details that a proposal should be approved only if, quote, "the governing body determines that granting the application is in the best interest of the school district and this state," end quote. NXP's Chapter 313 proposal will hurt Texas schoolchildren by depriving the state of $100 million over 10 years, reducing revenue available for education and other health and human services that AISD students rely upon. This, along with the loss of over $1 billion per year to Chapter 313 deals, hurts our schoolchildren and all schoolchildren across the state. Central Texas Interfaith calls on AISD trustees to fulfill their fiduciary responsibility and vote down the NXP deal.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Campbell. I am the parent of one current and two future Sadler Means students. I want to encourage the Board of Trustees to work with AISD administration to expand Sadler Means from sixth to eighth grades to be sixth through 12th grade, beginning with the addition of ninth grade in the upcoming school year. Over the last few years, Sadler Means has made huge strides in building community and culture at the school. Enrollment is increasing year over year. Students are now coming to the school from all over the district and outside the district as well. The academic rigor in advanced course offerings have also increased, as seen in the SCA, math, and STAR scores. By making the school sixth through 12th grade, students would have the opportunity to continue learning in this supportive and unique school community. Expanding to high school would also help increase overall enrollment at the school. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Lydia Moore, a former AISD teacher and administrator. I am calling in regards to Chapter 313 and the tax abatement for NXP. I'm a member of Ebenezer Third Baptist Church and a leader with Central Texas Interfaith. Members of my East Side congregation and community have seen their property taxes skyrocket, pushing many out of their long-owned homes in Austin. It is unconscionable to think that we would give a $100 million tax break to an international corporation, NXP, which made nearly $13 billion in the past year. Who will make up the tax loss for Austin? Ordinary taxpayers and small business owners will get stuck with that bill. My family and others in our congregation don't get a 10-year tax abatement, yet we consistently have supported the Austin Independent School District with our tax dollars. We should expect no less from that wealthy corporation to pay their fair share of taxes. Thank you.
I am Mother Minerva Camarena, Chief Director of St. John's Episcopal Church, an AISD parent and a clergy leader with Central Texas Interfaith. At a time when our schools and communities should be looking forward to the holidays and AISD's new Board should be focused on a new superintendent, implementing a new bond, and a new legislative session, we are being asked to revisit and rehash a divisive issue, Chapter 313, with no community support. Do we want taxpayer support for our public schools? Do we want to build relationships and partnerships with community organizations that have fought for public school funding at the legislature? And AISD parents and grandparents that have fought and ended a program, Chapter 313, that drained $1 billion in state taxpayers' dollars that could have gone to public schools? Or do we want to set the new Board up for a divisive vote that alienates our taxpayers and community by giving special tax cuts to our wealthiest corporations? It is time to turn the page and focus on the future of AISD, not a failed program of the past.
Hola, mi nombre es Madeline Rosales. Soy una estudiante de Sadler Means. Quiero pedir y animar a la junta directiva a trabajar con la administración y la expansión de Sadler Means de los grados seis a ocho a los grados seis a doce. Esta es una escuela fantástica, y todos merecemos la oportunidad de seguir aprendiendo en este ambiente. Gracias.
This is an English interpretation of Madeline Rosales' message. Hello, my name is Madeline Rosales. I am a student at Sadler Means. I want to ask and encourage that the Board works with administration in expansion of Sadler Means from the grades six to eight to the grades six to 12. This is a fantastic school, and we all deserve the opportunity to continue learning in this environment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allegra Sofia Arbery. I am a student at Sadler Means. Sadler Means has taught me to advocate for myself, love myself, and how to make my community better. I ask the Board of Trustees to work with the administration to change Sadler Means from being grades six through eight to six through 12. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Azul Matias, and I will give my message in Spanish for the expansion of Sadler Means from sixth grade to 12th grade. Hola, mi nombre es Azul Matias. Soy estudiante en Sadler Means. Sadler Means me ha enseñado cómo se siente una comunidad escolar solidaria. Le pido a la mesa de directores a trabajar con la administración para cambiar Sadler Means de los grados seis para ocho a seis para doce. Gracias.
This is an English interpretation of Azul Matias' message. My name is Azul Matias, and I will provide my message in Spanish regarding the expansion of Sadler Means from sixth grade to 12th grade. Hello, my name is Azul Matias. I am a student at Sadler Means. Sadler Means has taught me what a supportive school community feels like. I am asking the Board of Trustees to work with the administration to change Sadler Means from grades six through eight to six through 12. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Alvaro. I am a student at Sadler Means. Sadler Means has taught me how to be a leader and how to take ownership of my education. I urge the Board of Trustees to work with the administration to change Sadler Means from being a grade school with grades six through eight to becoming a school with grades six through 12. Thank you.
Good job.
Hola, mi nombre es Dariela Rodríguez. Soy una estudiante de Sadler Means. Quiero pedir y animar a la junta directiva a trabajar con la administración en la expansión de Sadler Means de los grados de seis a ocho a los grados seis a doce. Esta es una escuela fantástica, y todos merecemos la oportunidad de seguir aprendiendo en este ambiente. Gracias.
This is an interpretation into English of Dariela Rodríguez's message. Hi, my name is Dariela Rodríguez. I am a Sadler Means student. I want to ask and encourage the Board of Trustees to work with the administration in the expansion of Sadler Means from grades six to eight to grades six to 12. This is a fantastic school, and we all deserve the opportunity to keep learning in this environment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Navarro. I'm a student at Sadler Means. I ask the Board of Trustees to work with the administration on the expansion of Sadler Means from grades six to eight to grades six to 12. This is an excellent school, and we all deserve the opportunity to continue learning in this environment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fernando Cisneros. I am a student at Sadler Means. Sadler Means has taught me how to be a leader and how to take ownership of my education. I urge the Board of Trustees to work with the administration to change Sadler Means from being a grade school with grades six through eight to becoming a school with grades six through 12. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Janelle Chavez. I am a student at Sadler Means. Sadler Means has taught me what a supportive school community feels like. I urge the Board of Trustees to work with the administration to change Sadler Means from being grades six through eight to six through 12. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alema Morales Martinez. I am a student at Sadler Means. I urge the Board of Trustees to work with the administration on the expansion of Sadler Means from grades six through eight to grades six through 12. This is an excellent school, and we all deserve the opportunity to continue learning in this environment. Thank you.
I'm Michael Floyd, a proud parent of AISD graduates, a reading buddy at Norman Sims Elementary School, and a leader with Central Texas Interfaith. In the last legislative session, Central Texas Interfaith was joined by such groups as Texas AFL-CIO, the two major state teachers' unions, and Every Texan in opposing the reauthorization of Chapter 313. Together, we ended this failed program. Chapter 313 has cost Texas taxpayers tens of billions of dollars over its lifetime. In CTI's winners and losers analysis, we showed what could be done if we took that money and instead gave it to school districts on a per-student basis. Ninety-five percent of Texas schoolchildren are in districts that could potentially be getting more funding were it not for Chapter 313 giveaways. AISD alone could have been getting $10 million more per year. It's shameful to take tax money away from schoolchildren to line the pockets of wealthy corporations. Any program that undermines the public school system as a whole also undermines AISD and its students.
Hi, my name is Precious Nicole Livingston. I am a student at Sadler Means. Sadler Means has taught me that I have a voice and I can impact my community. I urge the Board of Trustees to work with the administration to change Sadler Means from being grades 6 to 8 to 6 through 12. Thank you.
I'm Edie Clark, Central Texas Interfaith leader from Walthar Church, retired public school teacher, grandparent of a McCallum High School graduate, and upcoming AISD kindergartner, and I oppose the Chapter 313 agreement. We're at the beginning of a new era for AISD, a new board, a newly passed bond, a new state legislature convening, changes in AISD's administration, and new opportunities for community partnerships that do not rely on tax giveaways to wealthy corporations. It's time to turn the page and move on from a contentious deal with community opposition to new opportunities for working together. As homeowners, my family and I don't get a huge tax giveaway, nor does my daughter for her small local business. Central Texas Interfaith leaders are public education advocates, fighting in the legislature for decades for increased funding for our public schools. Let's partner as allies to get more state funding for all our Texas public schools. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, Superintendent AISD staff. This is Ann Hardeman-Tai, former AISD trustee. Welcome, re-elected and newly-elected trustees. You're maintaining and joining an august group. You are now in the governing seat, and that is a weighty role, different from that of being a general citizen. Trustees, I'm calling to add my voice to those in the community who oppose your granting the applications of corporations who are rushing to take advantage of the Texas Tax Code, Chapter 313 state tax incentive program before it expires. Number one, corporate welfare is not really beneficial to school districts in the Austin area nor anywhere else in Texas. The people who run and own businesses will locate where they find the most advantages for themselves. That is a selfish act and ultimately benefits businesses more than the communities they operate in. While businesses provide economic benefits to communities, they also deplete local resources and place a strain on housing and transportation in particular, something to keep in mind. Number two, while the short-term incentives under Chapter 313 may provide money for cash-strapped districts like AISD, the long-term pernicious effects to state-funded Texas traditional public school districts far outweigh the immediate benefits. By the way, the reason AISD and other large recapture-paying districts are cash-strapped lies at the feet of our Texas legislators, a group dominated by small-minded, ignorant, short-term, and hot-button-issue thinkers rather than by true public servants. I speak in solidarity with the leaders of Central Texas Interfaith and other civic leaders who oppose the Chapter 313 incentives. Trustees, I urge you to vote against granting these incentives to corporations who have applied...
Hi, my name is Serenity Thacker, and I am a student at Sadler Means. I have a voice. Sadler Means has taught me that I have a voice and I can impact my community. To work with the administration to change Sadler Means from being grades 6 through 8 to 6 through 12. Thank you.
Dear AISD trustees and Dr. Mays, my name is Ali Katao. On behalf of Austin Chamber and Opportunity Austin, thank you for your service and the opportunity to share my support for the Chapter 313 agreement with NXP. NXP has a long track record of investing in our schools, nonprofits, and environment. They have done this while also supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives to provide educational and career opportunities for area students. Your support of a Chapter 313 agreement with NXP will provide up to $63.5 million in funding to AISD, not subject to recapture, to help invest in teachers and students. It will help secure Federal Chips Act funding to support a capital investment of up to $2.8 billion for NXP's proposed expansion in Austin, and it will create hundreds of good jobs and scale semiconductor production to provide down the cost of everyday goods. Your vote to support this agreement will reflect your sound fiscal stewardship aligned with your strategic plan. It is a win for AISD. It is a win for the parents, students...
This is Sharon Vane, the parent of a Bowie High School student and a 2022 AISD graduate. I want to welcome the new board members and thank those members who are concluding their terms for their service. Since we have several new trustees, I'm calling tonight to reiterate that as an AISD parent, I appreciate and welcome inclusive reading lists, libraries with titles that truly reflect all our students and families, and lessons that teach the truth of history. It's important to know that existing policies already allow parents to opt their child out of reading a particular book that they might have a concern with. I know because I see parents reminding other parents that this opt-out option exists. Interestingly enough, when lessons center on award-winning books like "I'll Give You the Sun," which features LGBTQ characters, or "Things Fall Apart," a classic novel that depicts pre-colonial life in Nigeria. Parents can make decisions for their own children, but they don't have the ability to make decisions for all children. Please continue to support intellectual freedom for all our AISD students. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jose Guerrero with Saint Ignatius Catholic Church and Central Texas Interfaith, and a parent of Austin AISD graduates, calling about the NXP Chapter 313 deal. The state's chapter code, 313, section 0265, states that, and I quote, "The comptroller shall post on the comptroller's internet website each document or item of information the comptroller designates as substantive before the 15th day after the date the document or item of information was received or created." End quote. This includes the comptroller's certification. The comptroller just posted Tuesday, November 29th, that one of NXP's Chapter 313 applications was certified. However, that certification happened on November 13th, documented by letter from the comptroller to AISD, and just made public this week. The comptroller posted this on their website two days after the statutory requirement and over two weeks after it was generated. Again, taxpayers in the AISD community are forced to play catch-up on a program plagued with lack of transparency and little public accountability.
Hello, my name is Elsa Rivera, and I am a leader with Central Texas Interfaith and a congregation member with AISD parents and educators. I am also the daughter and sister of educators in the state of Texas. Chapter 313 will give a tax break to billion-dollar companies. The tax dollars these companies are not paying hurt Texas schools, including the ISDs my sister and mother work for. Their school districts are already suffering from lack of resources, and we are seeing teachers leaving their jobs across the state of Texas. Lack of resources and support that could be funded through taxing these large corporations has a major impact on our children and their education. I ask you to please vote against Chapter 313. Thank you.
My name is Enrique Sines. I am a lifelong resident of Austin, a member of Our Lady of Guadalupe Church, and a leader with Central Texas Interfaith. On November 17th, local organizations, including CTI, Central Texas Building Trades, Workers' Defense Project, Labor's Local 1095, and Every Texan, sent a joint letter to AISD board members and members-elect opposing NXP's Chapter 313 application. Chapter 313 is weak on wage and job creation requirements for permanent jobs. Further, 313 prohibits school boards from requiring the enhanced living wage, prevailing wage, and worker safety requirements such as Better Builder, that the board made part of its bond package. This is not worth the kind of money this company is asking for. When our tax dollars are at stake, we need to demand the best for our workers. Thank you.
I'm the Reverend Miles Brandon, pastor of St. Julian's Episcopal Church in northwest Austin and a leader with Central Texas Interfaith. I live and own a home, pay taxes, and District 4. Though we've been talking with outgoing and incoming board members and AISD administration almost continuously over the past several weeks and months about NXP's Chapter 313 applications, we were extremely surprised to learn that AISD just posted this week a letter from the comptroller dated November 13th, over two weeks ago, that one of the two NXP applications was certified. This despite several news reports in the past two weeks that the applications had not yet been certified, and despite an open board meeting on November 17th in which this certification was not mentioned. So why was the letter only posted by AISD this week? Chapter 313 has been plagued by a lack of transparency since its inception and was killed by the legislature in part because of its lack of transparency. AISD should not be rushing through a $100 million corporate tax giveaway with new board members and with minimal public notice in the literal final days, the last 30 days of a failed program. It's time to move on. Thank you.
I'm Trenna Harrison of Saint Ignatius Catholic Church, leader of Central Texas Interfaith. I'm a taxpayer and a voter. I want to speak to your agenda items 14.9 and 14.10. When AISD taxpayers voted to invest $2.44 billion in public schools by passing multiple bonds, our organization supported these bonds. Taxpayers and CTI put our trust in you that our money would fund the public good. Giving $100 million tax break to a single wealthy corporation would break that public trust. Families, small businesses, and the rest of the corporation in Austin do not get this kind of special deal. We should not have to pay for NXP's. Do not break our trust. Please do not approve any new 313 agreements.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanne Torres. I am related to the school district. I'm a constituent. I'm leaving this public comment in support of the agenda item, which is the selection of an interim AISD superintendent. My comment is to follow up to an email I left in support of who I have known for over 40 years. She is currently working at the school district, is very involved in community efforts throughout the school district, and I strongly support her, having known her for as long as I have, in being appointed and selected by the trustees as AISD interim superintendent. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Helen Miller. I'm a community member. Board trustees and Dr. Mays, I have some real serious concerns about the students that have been sent to ALC for possession of drugs under the influence and the selling of drugs. These students are coming to ALC already under the influence and possession of drugs and vape pens. So there's no solution but sending these kids to ALC for 20 days from their campus. There should be harsher consequences for kids for possession and selling drugs on their home campus. Also, I would like to know why the AISD day school at Gardner-Betts was closed, why there's not an SBS unit at JJAP for special ed students that have committed real serious crimes, and they cannot go to JJAP because they do not have an SBS unit, so they are over at ALC with the students with misdemeanor charges. And why is there not anyone in AISD district that know how to...
Trustees and Dr. Mays, on behalf of the Austin Chamber, thank you for your service and opportunity to share my support for Chapter 313 agreement with NXP. My name is Gilbert Savala. I'm Vice President of Education and Talent at the Austin Chamber. As you know, NXP has a long track record of investing in our schools, nonprofits, and the environment. They've also supported equity and diversity initiatives to provide educational and career opportunities for area students. Your support of a 313 agreement with NXP will provide a direct financial benefit to Austin ISD of up to $63.5 million. That's not subject to recapture, and that can be invested in our students and teachers. It will also help secure Federal Chips Act funding to support a capital investment of up to $2.8 billion for NXP's proposed expansion in Austin and create hundreds of jobs in the semiconductor industry for our community. Your vote to support this agreement is a net positive for Austin ISD students, teachers, and families. I encourage you to support this agreement.
My name is Emily Sawyer. I'm a former AISD parent and a dedicated advocate. I am concerned about the proposed enrollment plan for Marshall Middle School. The fact that people will have to apply for a transfer that isn't really a transfer for a school that isn't open to transfer kind of says it all about this plan, a plan that will result in more confusion and the access to opportunity once again based on access to information and the capacity to navigate a complicated and convoluted process. Currently, the plan basically amounts to introducing yet another choice into a region already drowning in choices. I think it's important to ask if the district is acting based on data or based on assumptions. Has the district collected input on the intent of families that will be impacted by this new choice? We must not settle, as Nicole Hannah-Jones succinctly states, "For a diversity that, quote, 'functions as a boutique offering for the children of the privileged, but does little to ensure quality education for poor, black, and Latino children,' unquote." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Celeste Tavera, and I am the parent of a current Sadler Means student. I'm calling to urge the Board of Trustees to work with AISD administration on expanding Sadler Means, which is currently offering 6th through 8th grade, to expand it to 12th grade, so 6th through 12th grade. Our daughter has had an incredible experience at Sadler Means, and we would like to see her be able to continue in this unique and supportive community and have that option to continue throughout high school. We have seen that the school is growing in its enrollment every year with the academic programming that is offered to the girls, and are really excited to see what is to come in the next few years for this school in East Austin, and we would really like to see a high school option be offered. Thank you so much for your time. Bye-bye.
I'm Joy Pentecost with Congregational Church of Austin and Central Texas Interfaith. On the day that the AISD board accepted the NXP applications for $100 million in tax abatements this past May, the company had only committed to create only 25 jobs on each of its two applications, the absolute minimum. As a result of questions by CTI, the company changed the number of committed jobs to 350 and 150 respectively on its applications during the board meeting. This has now changed again. There is an asterisk next to the 350 promised jobs posted on the comptroller's website this week with footnote, quote, "Applicant will meet the minimum job requirement in the first year of the limitation and build to committed jobs by year five of the limitation." That means they are only required to create the statutory minimum 25 jobs in the first five years of the abatement.
This concludes public comment. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Trustee Hunter?
Thank you. I have, I'm asking for three clarifications, the first being for Sadler Means, if at some point we can find out where the decision to expand begins, and then if we can receive a, the board can receive a plus delta on the expansion of that school in its current state, its 6th through 8th, and believe they're asking for it to be 6th through 12. Clarification on that. Also, caller about ALC, SBS, students being housed instead of JJAP, I was, believe, won out, or Gardner-Betts is closed. Just some clarification around that from the superintendent. And then finally, the caller asking questions about Marshall, access and ensuring diversity, really concerned about, we know that from District 1, that students, black and brown parents are registering later, and so that if we're saying it's a, I don't know if we're saying it's a first-come, first-served, then those parents are going to, there's only a limited amount of seats, so how are we going to ensure equal access, or rather equitable access? And then how are we going, the district going to ensure that we have a diverse campus and that it doesn't look like some of our other programs? Thank you.
So three questions, and we can provide those updates for you later. I think some of those have been conversations that were being held with previous trustees. I think...
So three questions, and we can provide those updates for you later. I think some of those have been conversations that were being held with previous trustees. I think the plan is to onboard you all by providing you all with updates on where those conversations are, as well as the question about DAEP. I know that Gardner Betts was closed, but I would like to allow Mr. Hicks to be able to have some time to sit with you and try to talk through that for an update.
Trustee Hoffman?
Thank you. And I would like, as a new board member for my first official comment from the dais, to be thanking all of the family and community members for their public comments tonight. Quiero agradecer especialmente Madeline, Allegra, Azu, Sonoa, Doreya, Carmen, Fernanda, Janelle, Elena, Precious, and Serenity por usar sus voces para impactar a su comunidad. Que gran ejemplo de liderazgo. I especially want to thank all the students who called in, and that was a tremendous example of student leadership. And I want to thank them for using their voices to impact their community.
Thank you. Any other comments from trustees? Trustee Zapata?
Can you, Dr. Mays, clarify if, I'm confused about the NXP. Was that certified? Did we already get certification for that to consider? Is that why it's on the agenda?
So I know that it is an agenda item. I think you all will be talking a little more about it. Further down in the agenda, trustee Zapata, so you'll take the deeper dive there. And I think Mr. Rich might be able to provide you an update there.
Okay. So it was, it was put on the agenda because it was certified, is my question, I guess.
Dr. Rich has had it up to answer your question.
Since this was the agenda preview, it was put on there to state that it could be on the board voting meeting. Based off of the update that I sent to the board and the new trustees earlier today, we now know that actually only one of the programs were certified. It's item, and I'm doing this off the top of my head, so I apologize if I'm wrong. I believe it's the 10.9. No, that is wrong. I already know it is. 14.9, thank you. 14.9 is the one that was certified. 14.10 was not, and the administration is, and we've already written it into our comments, polling item 14.10.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rich.
Dr. Rich, can I ask another question, or is it better to save it for when we get to that agenda item? Okay. What the heck. Regarding 313, one of the callers mentioned that the number of jobs now had an asterisk next to it. Is that something that you might know more about?
What I know is that the application that we submitted does not have an asterisk. I actually was trying to pull it up because that was the first that I've heard that comment. I just have not been able to pull it up on the comptroller website yet.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from trustees? Nope. All right. So as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. Next, our next item is an update on the superintendent transition. Our current timeline for the permanent superintendent is to have someone named by the summer of 2023 to start the new school year. And tonight, we are scheduled to discuss a, to discuss a request for proposal for an executive search form for a permanent superintendent. This is the first part of the permanent superintendent process, and this board is committed to robust and inclusive engagement as part of that process. We will continue to include updates during our board meetings, and we'll update the website at www.austinisd.org/board/superintendent-search with new information and future opportunities for engagement with staff and the community. Okay, so I'll- search. Now, I'll want to talk about the interim. We intend to name the interim superintendent by December 15th, 2022, to start on January, by January 3rd, 2023. We recently closed an application for interested interim candidates. And during tonight's executive session, which will happen a little later, and at special call meetings next week, we intend to review and interview prospective candidates. Community and staff feedback is critical even to the interim superintendent process. So for that reason, we've scheduled virtual and in-person listening sessions over the next few days. Our first meeting will be held virtually on Zoom tomorrow, Friday, December 2nd. Our 12 o'clock noon meeting will be offered in Spanish, and the 1:00 PM meeting will be offered in English. On Saturday, December 3rd, we will offer an in-person option in this board auditorium at 11:00 AM. This meeting will be held in English with a Spanish translation provided. And our last opportunity will be held virtually on Zoom this Monday, December 5th. Our first meeting will start at 5:30 PM in Spanish, and a 6:30 PM meeting will be in English. Trustees will be at all meetings to listen to community feedback and comments on the selection process, qualities of a successful candidate, and other feedback you wish to share on the interim superintendent position. And all of our students, our families, our staff are invited to these sessions. These opportunities have been shared on AISD social media channels and are included on the district calendar. Please visit the superintendent's search website, district Facebook or Twitter, or district calendar for additional information and for the link to join the virtual meetings. At this time, we would like to open up the floor to any trustees to ask if you would share any words on what you are looking for from an interim superintendent, how others can share feedback with you, or any other comments you would like to share with our teachers, staff, students, and community. Anyone have any? Yes, trustee Lugo.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to kick things off. I think it's important for us to start this conversation. And I'm really excited to be able to do this permanent superintendent search with this particular configuration of the board. One of my hopes is that we really do find as many ways as possible to provide information out to the community so that they can see what the process is, the transparency behind that. Now, in terms of what I would be looking for from, that was about the permanent. In terms of what I would be looking for from an interim superintendent, you know, I would say I would be really interested in having somebody who understands what the administration and the school district is going through, someone with a good understanding of the landscape of the city and AISD, especially given the size of the bond package that has passed. And I can't believe I'm going to say this, but someone who can help get us through this short-term period, because I'm really looking forward to the permanent superintendent search. And I think if we can have some stability, I know I can't believe I'm saying that, but I really do think that if we can have some stability right now, that that would go a long way to help our district.
Thank you, trustee Lugo. Anyone else want to add to that? Oh, trustee Boswell?
I'm happy to share. Yeah, I really am excited to find someone who can continue the work to reconnect with the community, to continue building some joy and trust and safety among our staff, and to continue celebrating all the things that are happening on our campus. We know great things are happening all over our district every day, and really continuing to highlight that work. We need to tell those stories to ourselves and to our community and make sure that's out there and heard. And someone who really can be that steady bridge, who will be a partner in knowing that the interim is here for the interim and that our goal is to really find that next person to help lead our district, who I hope will be here and come here and stay with us for a very long time. So I think we need to focus on our staff, make sure we have the people in place to teach our students. And we need to continue the work we've done to really dive deeply and honestly and transparently into the data. And then someone who really believes that there is a huge amount of expertise that comes from the educators in our district and the others who work with our students and at headquarters. And there's also a deep well of expertise among our families, our community, and that we're best when we use all of that expertise together to get where we need to be. So that's really what I'm looking for.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Trustee Hunter?
I think for our interim, I'm looking for the same thing we're all looking for, which is someone our staff will feel comfortable with, be able to take direction from and be able to work with so that we can, in this small time, if we're not growing, you know, by feet, we can at least be growing by inches. And so I really think that's what I'm looking for in an interim in what I'm calling our forever superintendent, our permanent superintendent. I'm really looking for someone who understands the place of my birth and all of the things that come with it. We have a very complicated history. That person needs to understand that. They need to understand our families and that we are not like other places. No matter your socioeconomic status or racial background, every parent is going to get involved at their capacity level. And so- And then finally, again, someone who understands the social, racial, socioeconomic landscape of Austin and the makeup of Austin ISD.
Thank you, trustee. Anyone else? Trustee Kaufman?
So I would echo what others have said, but I would just add that I would be looking for a collaborative leader who understands the value of listening to the voices of those doing the work and those who are benefiting from the work in terms of our employees and our families, and who understands that the best solutions come from collaborative problem solving and not from top-down leadership. And then I would also be looking for someone who loudly emphasizes ethical leadership and ethical practices within our district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, trustee Gonzalez.
First time. So I agree with all the statements that the other trustees have made. I think that it's, we're, you know, we're not immune, as has been said before, of the national crisis of turnover of educational staff. And so it's important to me, comportment-wise, that we select someone that we feel will treat people with respect, will build our district in the direction that needs to go collaboratively, that we choose someone that we feel has the confidence of as many of the staff as we could possibly assess. It's also important to me that this person, like I think it was trustee Boswell says, understands that they're here to help us through a very difficult transition time. We're about to walk into another legislative session. This person has to be aware of the politics of our city, of the state, and have the competence to be able to navigate that. And so those are all very important qualities to me. But there are larger, bigger picture things that need to be heavily reevaluated in our district. And while the larger initiatives to do that different direction might not fall within the purview of this interim superintendent, I still want that person to not ignore those things because, as someone said earlier, we're talking about issues that are ongoing day by day. So yes, that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. So we will move on to our student achievement portion of the evening. Tonight, we will discuss scorecard goals 15 through 16, which are actually related to fiscal stewardship. So Dr. Mays, could you introduce our item, please?
I can. We have the infamous Taramos joining us to walk us through how we are going to take of our fiscal responsibilities to support student success.
Thank you, Dr. Mays. So members of the board, Dr. Mays, before you, we are going to go over our two fiscal stewardship scorecard goals, specifically goal number 15 and goal number 16. And so before you, on the screen, you actually have how we have performed over the past several years with both of these goals. Goal number 15 specifically addresses the first rating, which is the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. It's TA's financial rating for all school districts. So our goal as a school district is to achieve a superior achievement. That is a score of 90 or above out of a maximum 100 points. This current school year, we achieved a score of 90. So we are and have achieved that superior achievement. I will note that that score did drop two points from the prior year. The biggest reason for our loss in points, we lose, we lost actually eight points this year is because of our recapture system in Texas. And so as a school district, under the current recapture system, our recapture payment is due in August of every year. Because our fiscal year ends in the month of June, at the end of June, we carry a large current liability on our financial statements, which is our recapture payment. And so by us following the guidelines of the state and not paying our recapture payment until August when it is due, we, as a district, lose eight points because we carry that high current liability. So we are, in essence, punished for following the guidelines that the state issues. So one of the areas that we address that with this current year, or last year actually, is we paid our recapture payment early, before the end of June 30th, before the end of our fiscal year. And by doing so, we believe that we will recover four points. And so instead of losing eight points, we project to lose four points in the next first rating. And so the reason we did that is, again, making sure that we maintain our scorecard goal of a superior achievement. But one of the things that I will ask the board to note is even though we paid it early last year because of the interest rates at the time that were way below, not even half a percent. So our loss in interest earnings over the two months by us not having that cash flow was about $500,000. Now, current interest rates sit around 3.5% to 5.2%. And so by us paying this recapture payment early, we are going to potentially lose between $2.7 to $5.2 million in interest earnings. So that is a huge hit to our financials. And that's just because of the interest rate market. So that is one of the areas that I want us to look at. Currently, I am in discussions with TA to ask them to look at specifically that indicator that punishes us for making our recapture payment on time. And so the response that I have received currently is that we cannot appeal the decision until it truly impacts us and reduces our first rating. So until we receive a rating below superior achievement, then we can begin the appeal process. And so I'm trying to see if that can be changed to where school districts are not punished for paying their, or having that recapture payment in our financial statements. One of the other items to note, and trustee Boswell actually brought this up, the current indicator says greater than 90. But again, the superior achievement score is a 90 or above. So we probably need to look at that specific item saying greater than or equal to 90 or above because that is a superior achievement. The next scorecard goal was scorecard goal number 16, and that specifically addresses our bond rating. And so, well, I'm sorry, let me go back to the first rating. The other two points that we lost was basically looking at our administrative cost ratio. And so when you look at, as a school district, administrative costs, that includes function 41, which is a traditional administrative cost of a school district, and function 21 expenditures, which is basically categorized as instructional leadership. And so as a school district, we spend about $22 million in instructional leadership and $22 million in function 41 true admin costs. So about $44 million is what we spent last year. And so that's one of the areas that we will be looking at closely because according to the standard guidelines from TA, we are too high in that area. And so one of the things that I will note is that this current school year, we are spending $2.8 million less in instructional costs than we were last year. So we have made an effort to reduce those costs. But one of the areas that we will continue to look at this year is that specific ratio, and are we on track to fall within the standard guidelines again? So because we were above that threshold, we did lose two points in that area. And then again, the scorecard item number 16 specifically addresses bond ratings. Our goal is to have one of the higher bond ratings that is achievable by a school district. And so currently, we, as a school district, had a AAA bond rating. That is the highest bond rating that a school district can achieve. And so one of the new updates this year is that we asked another bond rating agency to look at our financials, to look at our management practices. And that was the Kroll Bond Rating Agency, and they also did give us a AAA bond rating. So we are the first school district in Texas to have two AAA bond- So we are the first school district in Texas to have two AAA bond ratings. And so that's going to be key when we, and tonight you will see a bond order to begin the bond sale process. So we hope to sell bonds in the month of January. The reason we strategically sell bonds in January is because historically, that's when investors have the highest cash flows. So they have money to basically buy school district bonds. And so that allows us to minimize our interest rate impact. And not only that, we do have that AAA bond rating so that we feel is going to position us as a district very strongly in the bond sale market. So we have achieved both of those goals. With the bond rating, it's very important to continue to look at fund balance and making sure that we do stay in compliance with our local board policy, which is 20% of unassigned fund balance is what we must have as a school district. We have achieved that over the past several years. We also did balance our budget this current school year and finished with a balanced budget last year. One of the things I will note is because we did finish a balanced budget, that really puts us in a position as a school district to really do something with compensation. And you hear through our surveys and through our communications with staff that that is a huge concern in this district just because of the high cost of living in the Austin area. And so that is going to be one of our top budget priorities this year, and we will be in a position to really make great strides in compensation, even more so because most of the school districts around us did pass deficit budgets. So it would be very difficult for them to pass two deficit budgets in a row. And so we are in a very strong position as a school district for next budget year. And then I will take any questions.
Trustees, any questions? Trustee Boswell.
Thank you for this, Mr. Ramos. I appreciate it. I have two questions about the first rating. One is if paying in June earns us a few more points on our first rating, gets us solidly above a 90, but loses us more than $2 million, really want to be sure that that is the choice we all feel like in partnership is the right choice to make. So I think that's an important question to be asking, especially if interest rates continue to climb and that number therefore would continue to climb. And when we're talking about, even like you said, even a tiny bit of interest on $800 million for a couple of months, the numbers get large very quickly. The second thing is I appreciate you speaking with the TA and would love to know what we as trustees might be able to do to partner with you, to talk with our legislators, to talk with other districts who might be in a similar situation. I would really love to work with other districts that might have this same issue. And I think a case can be made that this isn't good stewardship of taxpayer dollars if we're forced into this choice and to work in every direction we can. So I would love to have a conversation with the Intergovernmental Relations Committee about how we might support that work alongside you to make that happen. So, and TASB might be interested, TASBOs and TASAs certainly might also be interested in joining with us in that. And then my other question is about this function 41 and 21 expenses and whether you have a sense of whether we might be hit again with that two-point drop based on that this coming year. And I want to be really thoughtful as we're going into budgeting. I would love to have maybe five years of data as a board to really look at that and have you walk us through that to get a really good sense of whether our administration costs have gotten kind of out of alignment with the money we're spending in the classroom and elsewhere.
So we do have that data, and that specific topic will be part of the budget conversations.
Thank you.
Dr. Kaufman.
Just a very simple question. On selling the bonds, do you have information available on just what that process looks like and then in particular, how the people helping us sell the bonds, how that is determined and how those people are selected, or those firms?
So we, I can send on a board update, basically a bond 101 kind of guidelines on how the entire process works, how firms are selected, what firms are needed to complete a bond sale. You basically have your financial advisors in the district assisting with that. You have your bond counsel, and then you have your underwriters, which are the actual banking teams that sell the bonds for you on the interest rate market. So I can send basically a presentation on that, bond 101.
And my particular interest is just in how we're utilizing local businesses and how we're supporting historically underutilized businesses in that process.
Yeah. And I will say several members of that team, both on the financial advising side, the bond attorney side, and the underwriting side, there are minority-owned businesses in that group, several.
Trustee Hunter.
First, chief, let me say congratulations on having the double AAA. And then also on the first, I do have a couple of questions, and forgive my ignorance. I'm looking at indicator 19 and indicator 8. Those are like anomalies, right? And so I know you talked about minus the negative two on function 41. Is that for either one of those indicators?
No. So indicator 19, we receive the max points. And indicator 8, that is where we lost eight points due to our recapture payment.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. So that's where that would be, okay. That answer my question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. I appreciated trustee Boswell's request for like a temporal comparison of those administrative costs over time. I'm curious to know, and if it's for a later presentation, that's totally fine, but when we talk about that, are we talking about exclusively like payroll in terms of administrative costs? And are we talking about like central office administration? Are we talking about campus administration? Are there other things aside from payroll that are included in that? And also, and if this is for a later thing, again, the degree to which that administrative cost ratio is out of whack with whatever we're being assessed against?
Yes. So we have that data, and when we talk about administrative costs, it includes payroll, contracted services, supplies, miscellaneous expenses as well. So basically, all different types of expenditures that a district can have, not only in true administrative costs, but also instructional leadership, which is basically positions and expenditures that support campuses. A lot of that has to do with school leadership, academics, special ed, kind of like coordinators and above that support campuses would be included in that. And so one of the things that we're working on is kind of putting together a summary of historical costs for the board members as well as what specifically is involved in function 21 and function 41, to give you all a good idea of what we're looking at as a district.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, trustees, and thank you, Dr. Mays and Ed. As part of our commitment to monitoring, the last question is to ask if trustees accept the report presented as it aligns with our goals and constraints, and if not, to ask if this is still the right strategy for the district. Trustees, please raise your right hand if you are ready to accept tonight's report. Great. Thank you, trustees, for taking part in a shared commitment to students and student outcomes. Now, we will, I would like to ask you, Dr. Mays, do you have any final comments on this topic?
No, I think Ed summarized it pretty well. I think that to trustee Boswell's point, we did, of course, make some changes last year with central office budget, and we still see that we're kind of out of whack in terms of alignment. So I think that it'll be helpful for you all to kind of see some of the stuff that's already been done to kind of address that.
Great, thank you. All right, so we'll move to our next item, which is information reports and updates. Dr. Mays, would you please introduce the next item?
Sure. So we have Mr. Craddock from Mendez Middle School and Ms. Katrina Bailey, who also supports our 1882 partnerships, and Dr. Reach will be supporting him. But just to provide context for this board, we do have, again, Third Futures as our 1882 partnership. Part of our agreement with TA was to find and work with a proven group that had a record of turnaround schools to be able to give us a little more time to be able to support Mendez with turning around the academic performance. And so as we went through that process, Third Future was a program or team that was identified that has a record for turning around our schools. And so they've agreed to annual reports for us, and so Mr. Craddock is here to share that report today.
Okay, thank you very much, trustees. Superintendent Mays, thank you for having me this evening. I'm going to provide just a brief overview of Third Future Schools because we do have some new board members and trustees. Very quickly, the slide shows our schools that we currently have. We have the Academy of Advanced Learning. We have Capernaum II, Capernaum III. Those are located in Colorado, and those are K-8 schools, as well as Sam Houston in Midland, Texas, K-6, pre-K through six, and after college prep. Did someone say something? Oh, I'm sorry. And as well as after college prep in Odessa. Newly is Mendez Middle School, and we have that, we opened that contract. We started school August 3rd of 2022, and it is grade seven and eight, as you well aware. Next slide, please. So right now, at Third Future Schools and across the nation, we believe we're at a critical nexus right now. It's a very important time, not just with test scores and reading losses and math losses due to COVID-19, challenging hiring status vacancies across the nation. We prepare our kids for two things, closing the achievement gap in the year 2035 competencies. As you can see here, we really focus in on learning how to learn, learning how to think and learn, and habits of success, which is our positive behavior support system. Those two pieces permeate throughout our school and our culture and our instruction. We believe we're going to close the achievement gap, and we're going to teach kids years 2035 competencies. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is our NWEA MAP growth. So I know you're familiar with the MAP growth assessment that kids, students take three times a year, beginning, middle, and end. And this is our end-of-year growth last year across all of our schools, well, five schools. Mendez is not included because this is last year's data. And what we're looking for is one year's of growth, one year of growth in one year's time. That's unacceptable. That's what most schools and districts accept. That's what they want. That's their goal. At Third Future Schools, we shoot for 1.7. We need to close that achievement gap. So as you can see, as an average, we scored 1.85 years of growth in one year's time from August to May. Next slide, please. Not only demonstrating proficiency in growth, what we are as well is percentile increase. So what this slide shows you is the percentile points gained from the beginning to the end of the year. And across the network, we averaged 9.3 percentile points. So in essence, if we can replicate this three years in a row, we've closed the achievement gap. So that's, those are our focuses in on there. Next slide, please. Number one variable in raising student achievement, we believe at Third Future, is the quality of instruction, is effective instruction. We focus on not each and every day. We train our administrators, we coach our teachers. We had nine professional development days prior to school starting on August 3rd. Next slide. We train and coach our teachers on our instructional model. It's very unique. I don't have time tonight to go into detail of this, but I'm going to break this down. What we call this is LSAE. This is our personalized learning model. In essence, the students get 90-minute blocks on all core content. So ELAR, math, social studies, science, and art of thinking, which we can talk about art of thinking course later. It's a 90-minute block, 45 minutes of grade-level direct instruction, a quick assessment, a demonstration of learning, five to seven minutes, that's it. And then we immediately then differentiate the students into those groupings that you see up there, based on their performance, based on their skill around that objective for the day, and they are provided targeted differentiated instruction based on that. Students that are S2 and A move to a team center where learning coaches are providing support and academic coaching, and students that are Ls and S1s remain with the content expert, the teacher, for targeted scaffolded differentiated instruction to help close that skill gap on that objective of the day. Next slide, please. Want to talk a little bit about our DIAD concept. So we really fleshed this out last year and really expanding on it this year even more. So when you look at the knowledge, that is reading, writing, and math, you know, those core contents. But students also need perspective, and most importantly, they need experiences. And our DIAD concept provides this for all of our students at Mendez Middle School. Next slide, please. We do that through the art of thinking, teach kids learn how to learn model, how to really learn, not just reading, writing, and math, but really learning skills, learning new experiences, and embedding those into your daily life, as well as, and all this is incorporated in the DIAD concept. Next slide, please. So seventh and eighth grade, a DIAD is two. So in most of our other schools, three, four partners together, five, six, and seven and eight. Mendez is seven and eight, so we have those two coupled together. But you'll see, here's, the school and the community provide students with a set of required experiences and not just specific courses. So it's going to be a trip to another country for eighth graders. Seventh graders, it'll be an out-of-state trip at the end of May. Participation in team sports, performance arts, service hours, a community event, it could be a problem-solving project or environmental field trip. All of these events, these field trips, take place at the end of, in the middle of May. The out-of-state and the out-of-country takes place at the very end of May. But our DIAD concept runs this throughout the day, five days a week, and we'll talk more about that later when we get specific to Mendez. Next slide, please. Here you see, I know this is difficult to read, but I think you have in your packet. These are our seventh and eighth grade DIAD requirements. So not only do you have core content, but we also have experiences, we also have labs, and then specific electives, and then servicing community. This outlines Third Future and what we do for our seventh and eighth grade DIAD requirements across all six of our campuses. Next slide, please. Performance arts and athletics. All of our DIAD courses are two days a week, 90 minutes in length. And we'll talk specifically about what Mendez provides to all the students. But we believe kids need a variety of experiences. It's not just the standard electives. And we tap into our community partners to help provide those experiences. Next slide, please. Student travel, we talked about. We'll have an out-of-state, or out-of-state field trip for seventh grade, kind of keeping that a surprise because those students don't know what it is, so I can't tell you either. And eighth grade, we've just started the RFP process for our out-of-country field trip at no cost to any students. This is zero cost. Third Future even pays for passports for the out-of-country trip. So we've committed to do that, and then we've built that in our budget. Next slide, please. High-performance culture. So at Third Future Schools, this is one of our core beliefs. We truly believe in a high-performance culture, and we talked about effective instruction being the number one variable for student achievement. But we have some challenges right now across country and education, and Third Future Schools is not immune to those. Next slide, please. First, and I know that you guys mentioned this earlier, teachers are requesting a more, well, we're putting a premium on a work-life balance. I was just reading an article today on quiet quitting and that, what that is in today's job culture. So we're really trying to provide more balance for work and life. More teachers also reject a career ladder that takes 15 or 20 years to earn a livable wage. Our next slide, we'll talk to you about and show you what our wages are. And then last, the ability to make a difference is losing weight in the employee value proposition. So that altruistic notion may not be there as much as it used to be. So we're going to talk about briefly, six things that we're doing to help with this, to help our staff. Next slide, please. First, we're going to pay higher salaries. I believe our salaries average about $12,000 higher than the AISD salaries. And wherever we go, in whatever city we're in, interstate, we always try to be the highest as far as salaries. And our CEO, Mike Miles, budgets very, very effectively. We run a lean central office operation that we can, to make sure that we can do this. Next slide, please. Second, we eliminate non-instructional tasks. We've eliminated those this year. So if you'll kind of click through them all, please, sir. Discipline handles by administrators, that's nothing new. We've always done that since 2017. But key there is the lesson plans are provided by our curriculum developers in grades two through eight. So this is about a $1.4 million expense, and we've hired our best teachers, they've been Third Future teachers. They provide to all of our classroom teachers, the PowerPoint presentation, the lesson objective, the demonstration of learning, all the LSE assignments, and the answer keys. Everything, five days in advance. So when a teacher comes in, they don't have to use it. They can tweak it, they can say, Zach's stuff's not very good, I'm doing my own stuff. They can take it as is and use it all, but it's been vetted by, we have administrators that are over in charge of assessing each content area. And so all this is created for the teacher. Teacher spends 25, 30, 45 minutes, whatever they need to, to preview it, to be ready for the lesson the next day. And the fantastic thing about this is our ELD, our special education teachers have access to all grade levels. So when it comes to those two federal programs, they can adjust to the instructional level of the students. They find the tick that it's aligned to. And we also, we have these in Colorado and in Texas, so they're separate because we have two different state. And we also, we have these in Colorado and in Texas, so they're separate because we have two different state curriculums. So this has been a tremendous advantage to our teachers. We're saving them a lot of time from going home and having to create lesson plans. Second, copies are made by our learning coaches. So basically the teacher prints out a master and then we have a copy center at Mendez. So if you go in the old STEM room, we have a dedicated room with four brand new Epson printers. We have a copy clerk. She makes all the copies for the teachers. The teachers aren't fighting over the copy machine at lunch or at plan time or after school. We honor their time. Papers are graded by support personnel. Our learning coaches grade the LSAE work. We do that one time a week. Teachers have to grade the demonstration of learning, but it's real time and then they record one of those per week. So we're trying to reduce that grading burden on the teachers as well. Now one thing we're, I think we can get rid of this next year is right now we still have four periods of duty in a month. It's, it's 75 minutes of each time. So that's, that's usually in the morning or after school because we open at 6:30 AM and we do not close until 5:00 PM. No teacher has lunch duty. Administrators handle that. But I think we're going to be able to figure a way to get rid of duty next year. Can't this year, but we, our goal, our intent is to next year for our teachers. Next slide, please. Engaging community consultants. So this is the dyad concept. So we work with our community partners. If, if we have a person who wants to teach guitar, they come in and do that, which we do. Martial arts, jujitsu, we do. Tennis, we do. Soccer, we do. Photography, we do. We have all these there. These are our dyad concept that we bring community partners in and they're working in the school, providing support, resources and these experiences for our students. Next, please. Well, this is, we're not doing this at Mendez, but it is part of Third Future and maybe recruit in the Permian Basin. Recruiting teachers and, and Texas is difficult in Midland and Hector. So we've had, we've, what we've done is take our most effective and seamlessly providing tremendously helped us this year. Teacher apprentices. So a student teaches on steroids. So come out of college. Also is building substitutes. Two teachers and when we have vacancies, but when Next slide, please. This one's a little miss, I don't, I'm going to change the language of this. It says creating a learning coach position. We had the learning coach position for a while. We've enhanced it. So our coach position here focusing in our team centers, really training those teachers advanced kids, gifted kids at a higher level of teaching them in different lexiles and how to push kids redesign star assessment. It's going to have a lot more writing and you have to really know how to do short constructive responses. Not needed to do that. It's a customized solution for West I can show you that information as well as staff surveys, as well as a wide, we got a lot of stuff coming up this month before December 16th that I'll be busy over Christmas. So any, if you would like another briefing in January, February, just let me know. But let's talk about this. So this is seventh grade math. And as you can see in the bars on the left, that is after 10 months of instruction. So those are star scores taken in May, both approaches and meets. And then the bars on the right are in October. So from August 3rd to early October, I believe is when we took the assessment. So we're looking pretty good in seventh grade math. Looking pretty good. We're okay with that, not resting on that. And again, these are just what I'm showing you now. It's just one indicator. I look at many indicators of success. Next slide, please. Eighth grade math, same. Forty-eight, we're at 40 at the end of last now we're 24 at meets. So we're tracking, we're tracking. Okay there. Next slide, please. Seventh grade reading, again, tracking the same way. Forty-eight to 61, 21 to 21, that's flat. Just got a little work to do there. And then, next one, please. At eighth grade reading, we know we have more work to do here. So we're actually, we're, we're not, we're not down per se because that, the bar on the left is over, is after 10 months of instruction, verse three, but I don't like that trend. So we're working pretty significantly with eighth grade reading, really looking at those lexile levels, looking at that word count, looking at those short constructive responses and really looking in at those teaks. Are we really hitting those critical core teaks? We call them red standards, main idea, inferencing, cause and effect, sequencing. Are we really, are kids demonstrating proficiency in that? So we've got some work to do there. Next slide, please. It's a brief update on our enrollment and demographics. Have 225 students of those 40 students, students are special education, 128 are ELL. And there you see our ethnicity breakdown. Student discipline was asked to provide this information. So for seventh graders, we've had 15 total, now this is as of November 18th, November 18th. 15 total incidents of OSS that is attributed to 10 students. That was from the beginning of the year through October. And then we had one OSS incident from November to when I pulled this data. And then in eighth grade, 29 total incidents of OSS. Those were attributed to 18 students. In November, we had five. So from the first November until I pulled this data, we had that. And the top three reasons, fighting, vaping, disrespecting teachers. Those are the top three reasons. Now one thing I want to say, if you go back to the discipline slide, we don't have ISS at Mendez. So if a student needs to be removed from, from class, they, we have the team centers where I have learning coaches and all of our teachers are zooming all day long. Zoom is live synchronous learning. So if a student can't manage in class or doesn't want to manage, maybe it's been a bad day, bad morning, something's happened. We're one to one. They get their Chromebook. They can access it in our team center with support and, and a learning coach and they're live with their classmates and their teacher. Zoom in real time. To zoom feedback. These are elect that we offer every day for 60 minutes. Same teacher guitar we like to are taught by members of the Austin that is dyad coordinator. That's her job to do outreach. So that has been, that, that to really see these kids. It says he does something called a DOL. We actually show him the mom dad's modified whip around. That's a multiple response. So we're going to model that for Okay, so we have students at Mendez. Okay, four domains of language acquisition, reading, writing, listening and speaking. We do that all day long. See where I highlighted? Expect them to use at least one every four minutes to Have you done this? Shine away from, from the I can, I can put on like a utopian picture You gotta love kids. Of the areas where. Not as. City and. Vague. See vaping. I think we can come up with. Writing gets me a little bit worried, but disrespecting teachers is a just. And fabulously, I don't mean that in a good way. Have a population of students who. Their their lived experience is such that good behavior. And have other folks. Reality is the. A teacher can very easily be. Saying disrespect when what there is is communication and misunderstanding. So that scares me and and I would just like to hear. Scares me too sometimes. Have three rules at all of our schools. Disrespect staff. Train teachers for. Wanted us. That's what. Or calling them that in a class maybe. So there's levels in working with teachers and that's where we're. Second, with all of our administrators. Balance here, guys. Now, we're going to support teachers and we're going to support our staff. Teachers and how to communicate. This is a serious offense. Challenge there. It's it's an everyday challenge. We're dealing with. Eighth grade students, you're always walking that line. You're always helping and supporting teachers and coaching. At this point, and and I believe in transparency and. And what I want to see. To visiting. Achieving results for our middle. And that is. Notion of the. So it's just six, seventh, and eighth. Language, we just lump them in together. Sixth grade does not travel. State of the country. Hundred kids. I have sixty two dyad courses. Twenty two different. I need sixty two areas. Wouldn't be. Pardon for sir.
Okay, so Mendez with three hundred kids in six, seven, they.
We could handle that. We could handle that tomorrow.
So that may have answered my question for Dr. Partnering with. Third futures and.
I believe they are doing a winter concert. They're doing a winter concert. I'll have to check with Ms.
Students or do they go?
Monthly, so Dr. But we have emails, addresses for everybody. He sends out. Don't have one on me.
You mean the parents or to the?
To the parents, yes, ma'am.
All right, and. Said that administrator administration gives feedback. To teachers. Is is that? How? What feedback do you do you mean?
Instructional feedback.
Okay.
So our expectation for well, my expectation for all of our administrators in school level is they do two observations per day, one in the AM, one in the PM. And these are just short. These are, you know, ten, twelve minute, you know, and they may not even hit everything. And it may be just on a five by eight card, sticky note, whatever it may be, but we're constantly, we're constantly looking to improve instructionally. Whether it we have four domains. So lesson objectives, demonstrations of learning, purposeful instruction. The LSA, how we execute the LSA. So we're constantly, and I try and do three a day. Whatever school I'm in, I get three a day. Now, mine don't count for evaluation purposes, but what I do is I calibrate. So I may would take Ms. Bailey with me and we go look for ten minutes and maybe they don't even count, but we're going to calibrate. Are we on the same page so that we're giving consistent feedback that I come in and I'm telling them they're the best thing since I spread. Ms. Bailey's saying, you've got to work on this and this. That sends a mixed message to our staff. That's not that's not okay. So we constantly calibrate myself as well as my executive director and the director in Central Texas.
Okay, all right. I I have been getting the opposite. There's not much support and a lot of more military style. It was interesting. You said we're not a military school and that's all I've been hearing from parents and some staff. So I I'd like to just drop by as well and and I know we're talking every two weeks, but I just want to be transparent that that's what's out in the community.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you mentioned that you're. This college program, but you're not doing it at Mendez yet.
The only thing we're not doing at Mendez is the one classroom, two locations and the TFS teacher corps because we have not needed to.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any more questions? Yes, trustee Hannah.
Good evening. I just have a quick question for you before I begin. Are you aware of the makeup of this board currently?
The makeup?
Yeah. So from trustees seeing over, we're all professional educators. So we have a much more critical eye when we're speaking with you because we've all lived it and I more so than I guess it well, David and I both right now. David is supervising principals. I'm a field supervisor for teachers as well as I have a company where I work with different schools on exactly the skills of coaching. That's what I do. So when we asking questions, we're asking not only I speak for myself from experience, but we're also we know what's best for kids that are at the school and I know that better than anybody because I've been hired by Mendez twice.
Excellent.
Under their former principal, Mr. Jones, and then also I worked when Communities in Schools was there under Sharon. So I've come in and worked with those teachers to coach them up and and get them where they need. So I'm very familiar with the community. So my first question to you is of Hector Prep and the schools that you showed us, which most closely aligns to Mendez?
AAL, the Academy of Advanced Learning.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for that. And then when you talked about differentiation with the lessons, are you saying, okay, you're at this level. So now you go do you go do something that's project based or experiential or here's worksheet B?
Oh, no. So what we would do is so we do L, S one, S two, and A. The E will leave that out for ELL and for enrichment for gifted kids. So if I'm an L or an S one, then the the students are all going to be with the teacher, close ups. We're going to bring them to the front of the class and it is it is it is much more targeted, scaffolded instruction to immediately try and remediate the skill deficiency that's aligned with that objective. So if it's inferencing, that's a teak. Probably what's happening there is the student has a comprehension issue. So we're building in scaffolds that then they can they can make an inference from a text and not let that comprehension barrier stop them. So that's L and S one. They're right there with them. Now, all of our students, if you're L and S one in all core content with the exception of math, it's five hundred words of text, every content. If you're an S two or A, it's seven hundred fifty in those packets, seven hundred fifty words. So the minimum you're going to read at a third future school is ten thousand words a week. So the minimum you're going to get because you're going to get it in social studies, science, art of thinking, and ELA. So the minimum you're going to get is ten thousand. If I'm an S two or an A, I'm going to get my my S two packet or my A packet. It could I'm just saying packet. It could be an I Excel. It could be an I Ready. Those are left up to the LCDs to create and they're going to go to the team center or the collaborative room. So seventh grade has a collaborative room and eighth grade has a collaborative room and that's where we're working together because what we've really tried to focus on this year, students need to be able to work together. Your twenty five or twenty thirty five competencies, you have to be able to work as a team. You have to be able to communicate. You have to be able to solve this problem together. So we've built collaborative rooms at all of our schools and we have two and there are stand up tables and kids are back and forth and I want it to be a little noisy. If it's quiet, I'm a little bit worried because they're not collaborating. So they go to the team center where they work independently or they can go to the collaborative room and work in pairs and that's student based. They can pick that. We want them to pick that. Heck, I want to turn the team center into collaborative room if Mr. Miles would let me. So but that's that's how that works. Did that help answer?
It 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 wasn't answered. Thank you.
It was or was not?
It wasn't answered.
Oh, okay.
Map data that you showed us is not disaggregated. You showed us big blocks. I want to know what your one percent black kids are doing because in this district, that's already an issue. So I need to know if you're making a difference so that we can maybe model that and make a difference over here. But if you're struggling the same as we are, then I'm not. I personally don't. I don't see where there's a benefit in that. So I'd like to see it disaggregated by econo, you know, just like we disaggregate data here for our department. I need to see that also so that I can see in my mind if that's something that's working. And then when I was looking at the star data, so when you're looking at star data, if correct me if I'm wrong, star data twenty twenty two and then map data October, that's apples to oranges. Or did I miss it?
You did.
Okay.
So it was benchmark. Star data, you weren't provided any star map growth. I'm sorry, NWA map growth. You weren't provided any map growth.
Okay.
We won't. The only assessment that we've taken is the benchmark assessment, the same as all other AISD middle schoolers did. That was provided in in October. So the data was presented, star twenty twenty two, first quarter benchmark data. Those are as apples to apples as you can get. I will not be able to provide you with map data that's broken down until middle of January because we have not done our MOI and BOY data. There's no there's no reference to that.
What do you mean there's no reference? Tell me.
Well, there's no I can't give you any growth. I can show you.
Oh, I don't need growth. I need to know where they started. So then I when I see the moi, I'll know there's growth, right?
We can provide that to you in the middle of January that's broken down by ethnicity.
Okay, and then again, I so I think Dr. Foster and I must be sharing the same brain because when you said teachers, I wrote really vague disrespecting teachers, really vague because I think until you explain to a child, guys, we don't disrespect because what does disrespect look like, Miss? Disrespect is when I ask you the first time and you don't respond on my first request. That's disrespectful for Miss Hunter. That might be okay in your house for your mom to say that five times and then eventually scream at you because, you know, honestly, that's what it is in my house, even though in a classroom, I would never do that, right? If Miss Hunter asks you, that's when I need it done, right? And then I'm like, I told you to pick up your shoes. So they need to know what that is. Have we trained kids to understand that? Whenever I go into school and see respect, responsibility, what is respect? I cannot hit a target. I cannot see. And so that's something I think about that I work with teachers and I'm like, they're not yelling at you. They're just loud and their family, that's how they get heard. That's how that's how things get done. The person is the person who's aggressive, that's the person that gets their needs met, right? So that's what that's what that cultural competency that has to come in play or you're dinging kids for just being who they are. And I don't know that you're doing that. That's just something like I said, they're saying they're agnostic. Right now, I'm in a different church altogether. And so really gonna like if trustee Zapata would allow, you know, I'd love to go and visit and see so that I can see firsthand what's going on. And then.
Can I may I respond to that?
Yes, please, please.
So I forgot when you said so I brought you a sample. This is our habits of success ticket. So this is our positive behavior support system. So if coach and I love what you said about, you know, coaching and teaching these kids what disrespect looks like. Seven traits. Be at school and be on time. Be respectful of others. Take responsibility for your actions. Persevere. Strive for accuracy. Do your best work. Engage positively. Those are on the back. Ms. Bailey is a teacher and I I go I demonstrate this. She writes my name. She checks the box. I get this. I collect these. They use them for iPads, AirPods, whatever it may be. So reinforcing that positive behavior, like you said, and really coaching kids. I apologize that I missed that.
No, thank you for sharing that. There's a PBIS, you know, we need to know what that is. The last two things I guess I really want to talk about are the newsletter. And so that's going out electronically in a community that may or may not have access or use access well, or I shouldn't say well, but to the capacity that they can. You might not know this, but I'd like to know what is your open rate on that newsletter?
I'll have to find that out.
Yeah, let me. I would really love to know what your.
The unread, the open red?
Open. Yeah, it's just open rate. Like if you use Mailchimp, it'll say sixty five percent of people opened up your email or only twenty percent of people opened up your email this week. And then finally, the walkthrough form or you call like a teacher feedback, I think is what you said.
Um, spot observation.
Spot observation. Perfect. And is that aligned with what? T test, PPFT?
It's a I mean, it's aligned with T tests. We do T tests. Domains two and three. We do have, I mean, an exemption waiver for our own evaluation system. And so our spot observations is it aligns with Senate one ninety one in Colorado and it lines with T tests here in Texas.
Awesome. That's all I have for you. Thank you very much for answering my questions. Thank you very much for answering my questions.
So trustee Hannah, just an FYI, visit anytime. You don't have to schedule or have permission. The segregated data, we have talked with their future, so they do plan on bringing the segregated data at the next meeting because we said that is how we view our data night, where students lumped all into one category.
Thank you so much, doctor.
Dr. Mates, if I can say one thing, I do believe that the trustees did receive the disaggregated data. I think the only piece that's missing from that data, and I know we've talked about that that needs to be provided, is for our economically disadvantaged students. That wasn't disaggregated, so they did go back. And you should have received a handout in your packets that has the disaggregated data on there, with the exception of economically disadvantaged students.
Any other comments, trustee Willy Chu?
Yes, thank you. Is there any way we could put that slide back up with a picture of students in class?
Up, sure.
Is that doable? So I don't have slide numbers, I apologize. But I'll go ahead and ask my questions while those go up.
Was it the dyad one? Was it the different activities? Or is it this?
It is that one.
This one, okay.
Yes, thank you. So I, and maybe I missed this, did, do we have the demographics of the teachers and staff?
I do not have that on, I don't have that prepared. I can easily get that.
Do you kind of know at the top of your head if there's like, if the demographics match the students closely or not?
I, they, they do, they do. I can, I knew, I figured this would come up, so I prepared that. So a total, we have 10 total instructional staff members that are currently bilingual, which is over a third of our school. But I, I didn't pull down.
Bilingual, but, okay.
Bilingual, I didn't pull down, I would say. Let me run through it real quick. I would say either six, I'd say 60 to 70% are African-American or Hispanic.
Okay. And do any staff members send their child to this school?
I don't know if we have anyone old enough to have a middle schooler.
Does anyone in, in the entire Third Future, like corporate organization? Anywhere send their kid to this school? To one of these schools?
To any of the Third Future schools? Yes ma'am, yes, many, many, many do. I have two administrators that send their, their, their boys there as well.
Okay. And so do this, how big are the, the class sizes? You said 45 to 50 students?
Oh, no, no, no. So one classroom, two locations. What you're looking at is a picture, this is, so what we're doing here is expanding the reach of the most effective teachers. We don't do this at Mendez, there's no need. Yeah, we don't need to do that because, I mean, obviously it's very desirable to live here. And in West Texas, it's harder to recruit. So sometimes there, what I have to do is we do one teacher, two locations. That's what you're looking at there. That's how we're solving that staffing problem in West Texas. But not at Mendez, no ma'am. Our class sizes are maximum 25. Nobody at Mendez has more than 22, I believe.
And how much planning time do teachers go?
60 minutes at eight and a 30-minute duty-free lunch.
Okay.
And we never pull them to cover vacancies because we have TAs and learning coaches.
Okay. And so something I'm seeing on that slide, we're, so I'm looking at, are you familiar with the Charles Butt study on teacher retention strategies?
No ma'am.
Okay, I'll send that to you. Because I kind, so I'm seeing that more teachers place a premium on work-life balance. They, they want to be paid a professional wage, as you have. And the ability to make a difference is losing weight in that proposition. So the data doesn't show that, that it's losing weight. It shows that as high as the weight that teachers have on altruism in their career, the working conditions and lack of autonomy in their job and lack of work-life balance is, is outbalancing that. So not that, you know, our population of teachers is losing that altruism. And so, so opportunities for creative work is like 79% of teachers have, who've left or are staying in the profession is something that, that they want, is a retention strategy. So I'm seeing, it says that one year of experience is preferred.
For?
For teachers? Is that right?
No. Let me look through my slides. Can you go down, sir, please? One more. Creating the TFS teacher corps.
That's the teacher corps?
Yeah, so customized solution for West Texas.
For West Texas, thank you so much.
So if we're gonna, you know, really, if I'm going to bring someone in from, I'm going to move them and give them a $10,000 bonus. I want to, if I have one year experience, I have one year of data that I can evaluate. Am I making a good, am I making an informed decision? We are not needing to do that in Mendez Middle School because Austin is a very desirable place to live. We've had no shortage of candidates.
Okay. And then, so you talked about pulling, you don't have ISS, but you will pull kids out and put them in a Zoom class?
Yeah, so if a student needs to be removed from class or they say, hey, I need, it's sensory overload, whatever it may be. They don't go to a traditional ISS room. ISS rooms traditionally, it's one room, you have an ISS monitor. The kid gets a piece of paper or a book and they have a cubby and they're working. That's your traditional ISS room. At Third Future, they would just go to the team center. They grab the Chromebook, go to a team center. All the Zoom links are posted in our team centers. Open up, they're synchronously online, they have their headphones in, they're typing in the chat, they're unmuting, they're talking. They can, they can participate, no different than, this is one of the things we learned from COVID. We learned how to do synchronous instruction well. And so we, we never stopped doing it. Our Zooms are always up. We never stopped. So if a student's sick, they can log in. We have funders and investors, they can log in. I expect my principals to log in and observe and then give, give instructional feedback from that lens. So students can, anytime, they can log into their Zoom class. So there is no traditional ISS, they're still getting direct instruction.
Are you tracking the number of students that get put in that environment?
I would have to check with Dr. Thurston. I believe they are, because usually, if, if, if the teacher's asking them to do it, it could be based on a referral. But the kids can self-advocate for themselves too. The kids can self-advocate.
Yeah, because I'd like to see, I'd like to see that being sent or self-advocating and to see the breakdown in demographics, especially students receiving special education services.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions, trustee Willy Chu?
I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. All right. Any other trustees?
Sure.
Go ahead, trustee Gonzalez.
I think I might have, I was going to ask what trustee Willy Chu just asked. Didn't, just to clarify. Did I hear correctly that you're using, that we're using like Zoom teaching as a behavior management strategy?
No, no, sir. So what we're doing is if a student needs to be removed from class or the student self-advocates that, hey, I need, I need to leave class for some reason. They go to a team center with a computer. And they're able to log in and they're able to, they're able to join the class through Zoom synchronously. Instead of going to an office and sitting in a chair or going DSS and getting whatever packet of work they had, this is a better way, a more effective way of providing instruction for students that need to be removed from the classroom for a variety of reasons, where they self-advocate to be removed. But they're not, they're not, it's not just, they're not Zooming all day.
No, yeah, I, that wasn't the implication of my question. But I would be interested to see data that, that points to the fact that that is more, that it is making a difference, you know, to the degree that you're saying that it is. I also would like to hear more about the trip that you discussed. Are there, are there requirements to be able to attend that? Who, which populations of students, if any, are excluded from that? What are the, you know, so on and so forth?
Sure, they are, so there are requirements. So the, the student travel requirements is .7 years of growth at the middle of your benchmark, which I'll have that in the middle of January. 91% attendance rate and no more than two referrals. So we pull that data first, we pull the, the growth data. And then I'll have a final list of candidates that are eligible by Feb. 1. And then we start communicating with parents and students about their eligibility and we lay the roadmap out for them.
So if students cannot meet the growth targets that they're, that are specified by you, .7 years, then they would.
They don't get to go to the out-of-state, nor do they get to go to the out-of-country, but they could go on another local field trip.
Even if the reason for that is beyond their control? If they're, for example, receiving special education services or something like that?
No, no, I mean, special education service is different. We look at the IEPs now. I mean, you know, if, if you don't have, if you have a 50%, I'm exaggerating, attendance rate, we're not going to excuse you for that unless it's due to hospital homebound or your special education.
Okay. So there are students that are excluded for disciplinary reasons and also for attendance reasons and academic achievement reasons?
If they don't, if they don't meet 91% attendance rate and they have two or more referrals, they're not flagged on the first list. Now, if there's exceptions to policy, we'd look at those, but those would be rare and few and far between.
Okay. The, the other question I had, kind of to that degree, or to related-ish, is you specify that you have 44 students that you've out-of-school suspension so far this year. Forty-four students across.
Forty-four incidents, or will you go to the suspension side, please, sir?
Oh, we have 44 incidents, yes, sorry.
Incidents attributed to 28 students, I think 10 7th and 18 8th graders.
I would, I would like to see that broken down demographically. Are they special education students? Are they emergent bilingual students? Are they African-American students? What are the demographics of your out-of-school suspensions?
Yep, yes, sir.
I'd also like to hear about how education in languages other than English occurs at Third Future Mendez.
Oh, so just ELL, English language learners?
No, I mean, language, do students receive instruction in languages other than English? Is Spanish, French, are there?
They get, no, no, they get support as needed. So we have 10 instructional staff that speak Spanish, that are bilingual, Spanish and English. And so those staff, they support kids, but we do not run a true dual-language program. We have the ELL teacher that provides those supports during, they push in and they, they provide ELL support to our emergent bilinguals and LSAE. But it's not a, I guess what you'd say, a traditional dual-language program.
So dual-language is different from languages, students receiving instruction in languages other than English. So you're saying that their, students are not given the opportunity to, to take any foreign language classes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
That's okay.
Well, what we're hoping to do, I don't want to, I told you today, but I don't want to spill the beans here. We do have an opportunity to do an after-school one that's going to help us with our, with our travel. But right now, we do not have any, we do not have any foreign languages offered in, in, in our schools. Neither for dyad nor for core content.
Okay, that's tough for me. I, I'll just give historical context. My, my grandmother was a student in this district 70 years ago, right? And she was in elementary school. She went to an elementary school at the time that was called an industrial Mexican school. And the program of education at that time was to industrially train Mexican-American elementary-age children. And then they were not offered instruction in their heritage language. And so what I'm hearing you say is that at a campus where you have a significant number of students that are English language learners, they are not afforded the opportunity to learn in their heritage language. Is that correct?
They get support in their heritage language as needed.
But not instruction?
Instructional support, so if they're not understanding. Now, if, if one of the 10 teachers, if they're in a class, that the teacher's bilingual or the ELL teacher's in there and the student needs that, the teacher does provide that support. But they're not providing, so 45 minutes of direct instruction, they're not providing that in, in, in Spanish. It's, it's in English.
I, I'm concerned about the, the support for emergent bilingual students. When I look at the, the achievement data that's been provided, that's been broken down by demographic groups, English language learners are amongst the lowest in every one of the four that we're looking at. And I'd be interested to see how your model, because as the other trustees have mentioned, it is very unorthodox. What, what, how the growth is distributed amongst those different populations of students. Are English language learners, emergent bilingual students growing at the same degree that special education students are growing? That your Hispanic students are growing, that your black students are growing? Because I, I'm concerned about how the model that you've described appropriately scaffolds for those students or doesn't. But I don't know yet because I haven't seen the information. The, I appreciate, as someone who was recently in the classroom, the effort to remove non-instructional tasks from the plates of teachers. And when I look back at the meeting from March, when the contract with Third Future was originally approved, one of the things that I heard trustees request information about was data regarding teacher retention. As that is a major focus across the country, right? And if your efforts are aimed towards increasing that teacher retention, what does the data show so far this year in, in your impact in that area? Have you retained a greater degree of teachers than perhaps is the case across the rest of the district? How many vacancies are you currently operating with, so on and so forth?
Yeah, so I mean, we talk about retention, you know, I think one of our tenants at Third Future about retention is really 185 student-teacher contact days of highly effective instruction. And so I know that doesn't seem to match up with retention. But I can, I can give you the hard numbers, is that we've had three teachers resign at Mendez. And we've had four we've had to remove. And, yes.
I have a staff up.
I think we have 30, 35?
35, so fifth?
Yeah, when I look at everybody, yeah, probably office staff, sped support and everybody, 35. Yes, sir. So, and, and the reason being, is that odd compared to other schools? It's about in line. But maybe, maybe a little bit higher. But the standard is here. And we communicate that, that standard, that instruction, those expectations when we hire. I make sure our principals are crystal clear when I tell them that. Crystal clear. And we don't lower that standard. Now, we coach and provide support. And when people can't reach the standard, we're not going to sacrifice that in high-quality instruction for your students at Mendez Middle School. We don't do that. And we do coach, we do provide support. I've seen it, I'm firsthand, I insist on it. I will not allow a principal to remove someone if they haven't done that. All firings and, or anyone who wants to be removed, that I have to know about it. I have to approve it. Principals do not have necessarily the autonomy to do that. But that's the standard. And it's about 185 student-teacher contact days that our kids, Mendez, all the students in Third Future Schools get high-quality instruction 185 days. And if I have a classroom teacher that can't meet that bar and I have a TA that can, I will move that TA into that role because that's what those kids need and deserve.
So what I'm hearing is that the, the Third Future approach to teacher retention has not necessarily bucked the trend overall?
Well, I think it's totally safe. We just put the TAs in, we've enhanced our learning coach role. Some of the initiatives, you saw the six pieces there, the salaries and all that, we've just put in. So it's December 1st, we just started August 3rd. I think it's too premature to make that assumption.
That's fair.
You did ask about vacancies.
Vacancies, we have two special ed, that's it. Two special ed and those are within the last week, I believe. No core, zero core content vacancies. And those special ed services are not being missed because our coordinator is making up for those instructional minutes.
Okay. I would echo the sentiments of some of the other trustees. I would also like to visit Third Future just to see the model in action. I'm not opposed to unorthodoxy, but I would like to see it.
You're more than welcome, anytime, sir.
Thank you. That's all for now.
Any other questions? Trustee Lugo.
So one of the things that I love about Austin and Austin AISD and our families is that we're really curious and we ask lots of questions. And we're passionate about education that our students receive. And while interested in hitting outcomes, academic outcomes, we also want to make sure that our kids are being treated, I want to make sure our kids are being treated with respect. So I really appreciate the questions that have been asked. I do hope that, or I request actually, that the next time we have an opportunity to have you present, that the slides only include information about Mendez rather than the other locations. Because we're really talking about Austin, right? And we're talking about a specific part of Austin that has a long history, really involved community members. And the other thing would be, and this is not new to the AISD district administrators, they know I can be a pain in the butt. I noticed that there were more than one occasion where questions were asked and kind of like a higher-level response was given. So like a broader, general, or maybe philosophical or conceptual response was given. And so I do ask that, you know, as much as possible, I, I think, you know, we really appreciate being able to support the work that you and the teachers and staff are doing. And the more that we can understand the concrete responses, the more that we can, you know, really kind of get behind what's happening, if, if that's the appropriate response from us. So just general comment. I am curious about the trips and I appreciate trustee Gonzalez, you bringing that up. Because it made me think about, well, what about students who might not be eligible to have a passport, right? So maybe they don't have documentation.
We haven't run into that as far as my. We haven't run into that as far as my knowledge goes. You know, if we do, we'll cross that road when we get there. I can tell you, we do field trips locally as well. All students get at least one. Those will occur in the middle of May, we actually discussed that today. So, we haven't crossed that, that I'm aware of.
The other question I have is, or there's two more, actually. So, you mentioned that you have community members or people out in Austin who come in and provide some level of instruction. So, how are those individuals vetted and selected?
So, they're vetted, we do the background checks, we do the fingerprinting on them as well. So, Ms. Blaine is our dyad coordinator at Mendez. That's her role to then hire and find the activities and people that the students like and want. And then she goes out and finds them. If they pass the interview and they get offered a position, then she does the background and fingerprinting through Third Future Schools. We onboard all of our own people. The, those dyad coaches, let me say that, yeah, dyad coaches, we'll call them dyad coaches. They make $30 an hour, and if they work more than 26 hours a week, they get an initial 200 that week.
Okay, so vetting involves background checks. What about, you know, disposition, you know, experience working with middle schoolers? I had the truly pleasure, this is not me being sarcastic, I had the pleasure of working with AmeriCorps. And I did not think that I was cut out to work in a middle school environment, but lo and behold, I really enjoyed it. But there's a certain kind of, like, I also had to kind of bring a different part of myself into that work. So, what kind of, is that involved in the interviews?
Yes, ma'am, it's a full interview process. So, it's a full interview process that Ms. Blaine conducts. Would be a performance piece, do they understand that skill? Could be working with kids, taking a tour around the school. So, it's a pretty rigorous process. And then if they pass that, they get offered the position. If they accept, then they go through the normal background fingerprint procedure.
And then how many of those individuals, and you may not have the answer right now, but how many of those individuals speak more than one language?
Two.
Two of?
Two of, that we listed, the soccer photo, I think there was eight, so two of eight.
Okay. Are there recruitment efforts being made to-
For students or for staff?
For staff. The dyad, whatever you wish to call them, the dyad coaches.
Oh, I'm sorry, the dyad coaches. I mean, we're constantly on the lookout for that. I don't think that pipeline ever stops, but as far as traditional outreach, I think most of it's word of mouth. I know that she had two interviews today. I'd have to ask Ms. Blaine specifics about how she's recruiting. I try and stay on the instructional side.
Yeah, that would be great if you could provide that information either sooner rather than later. So, kind of the breakdown of who are the dyad coaches, right? Like the demographic, and you'll notice that there's a trend here, right? And it's really looking at how do our students relate to the adults that are in the classroom? Or how do they relate to the adults that are serving in that dyad coach position? Speaking of adults, I also was wondering, so I appreciate the information about the parent learning walks. And I also know that parent engagement can look really different across a school district, a city, right? If you're a single mom who's working two jobs, you love your kid, you're trying to put food on the table, you're trying to make sure they got clothes, you may not have time to go do a parent learning walk. That doesn't mean you don't care. So, all of that to say, what does parent engagement look like from Third Future's initiating that with parents, right?
Yeah, sure, so when students register, they, you know, our protocol's always been they get an initial email call within 24 hours from a school administrator welcoming them, thanking them. We've moved our front off, we've, have you visited the campus?
I did, last year.
Last year, okay. So, when you come this year, we've changed everything. So, we've moved, our two office staff are now out front, they're engaging parents right away, not back in the office. Mendez has a pretty big office space that we don't have at our other schools. I don't really like it. I don't even let my principals use the office. So, engaging them, they immediately meet with the principal or then assistant principal. And then, you know, an example, they can come into the school anytime as well. So, if they couldn't do a learning walk and anytime they can, then we're open. We're also open from 6:30 to 5:00. That's a lot. That's a lot. And so, you know, those doors being open every morning at 6:30 and they don't close till 5:00, kids come in, they've got a safe place, they get breakfast, they can go to the cafeteria in the team center, they have dyad after school if they want to do electives or, I'm sorry, not electives, athletics after school, they can. But with an open 6:30 to 5:00, we do build a lot of relationships, guys, because our kids are on campus a long time, and that's at all of our schools. So, that's a, you know, that's a positive for us. And back to the engagement, you know, it's, whatever they want, we try and do. Now, I can't, we can't do everything for everybody, but if it's reasonable, we will do it. And, you know, we're there for our families and we're there for our kids. You know, another thing for the single mom, we will never, ever close for snow or ice. We never have. We never have closed for snow or for weather in six years. So, we're talking today, 2020, '21, the bad storm. The only school open in a 250-mile radius in Midland, Texas was Sam Houston Elementary School. We never closed. So, we won't, that helps those parents. They know they can count on us.
I do like the fact that the school is open those longer hours, that is a great point. I want to make sure I'm understanding the statement when you say that anything that the parents ask for in terms of engagement, that y'all will deliver.
We try and do, we try and do.
Right, try. But that's the thing, right? Like, it's not so much that the parents should be seeking it out, although some can, right? Some can and some do, and God bless them. How is the school going out? And then I noticed that you, or I remember that you said that the principal and I think you said the assistant principal are kind of out there trying to, you know, make sure that they're visible and available. Are those individuals bilingual?
No, none of my administrators are bilingual, no, ma'am.
Okay, that's it.
All right, trustees, okay, trustee Boswell.
Thank you to everyone who's here for your patience about this, and thank you for the presentation and for the time you're taking to answer all of our questions. I think it's really important to remember that Third Future is here to help us avoid closure of Mendez and help us avoid a TEA takeover by making sure that our students are getting really what they need to succeed on that campus and in that neighborhood. So, thank you for taking the time. I appreciate all the questions, and I know we're hoping to hear from you quarterly.
Yes, ma'am.
And I hope we answer a lot of our basic questions now so that we have a deeper understanding when you bring the data back to us and a better understanding between us about disaggregation and all the things we're looking for. So, thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
I do recommend that anyone who's interested do take a visit. Several of us did visit in September. That was a substitute for the first quarterly report to the board. That was the choice that was made. And it makes a whole lot more sense when you see it and kind of clarifies, I think some of the agnosticism might help clarify how you feel. So, it was very helpful to see it in action. And I do appreciate the reminder to disaggregate the data. Thank you for the academic information, but I do think the discipline is equally important and the fact that we do look at race, special education status and economic disadvantage. And that was hard-fought in the district and has really been a shift in our culture. So, thank you for coming with us on that. I know we had talked in the MOU in March at the meeting when we approved the agreement and the partnership. The MOU, the addendum, had talked about a quarterly report about academics, attendance and discipline. So, I would love to add attendance next time. I don't need to see it this time, but I believe that was in the addendum. And then in the conversation-
Can I ask a question? So, our ADA rate, is that what you, our average daily attendance?
Yeah, that would be fantastic, thank you. And then I know that in the conversation that we had before the vote was taken, we also discussed including in that quarterly report enrollment, which I see you have, so thank you for that. And I would love to see the number of students who have left this year also would be a very helpful measure to have, to know how stable that enrollment is or how, and understanding that there's by nature some stability.
I have that data, would you like that?
I would love to have that, yes.
So, to date, since August 3rd, 28 students have left and 27 new have enrolled.
Okay, and you're higher than you projected to be, is that correct?
I don't recall.
Okay.
I think I set my goal higher than-
Okay.
My own person goes, I think we're lower.
Okay, you're lower, so that would be helpful to know as well. But thank you for that information, I appreciate that. And then the other thing that we discussed, including in the quarterly reports, was information about teacher retention. And if we look at academics, discipline, enrollment, teacher retention, those are all on our scorecard. They're all things that we monitor for every campus and we put them on our scorecard on a very short list of things because we believe they have real importance and value. So, that teacher retention and turnover number, and we measure teacher and staff retention. So, that would be valuable to have in those quarterly reports as well. So, thank you for that. And then my final questions are about the discipline data. And if I run the numbers and I look at 28 individual students with those 44 incidences of out-of-school suspension out of a population of 225, that's 12% of students who've been received out-of-school suspension this year. And I would love a sense of how that compares to other Austin ISD middle schools or other middle schools with similar populations. I think that's a very important question to ask. And another thing on our scorecard is reducing disproportionality in our discipline. And we know that students who receive special education services, students who are Black or Latino tend to have higher discipline rates in our district, and we're doing good work. And I understand you have a different code of conduct than we do, but my understanding also was that we were going to be following district-wide procedures that are in place to reduce that disproportionality, to ask a lot of questions before we're removing a student from the classroom, either for an out-of-school suspension or an in-school suspension, which I understand isn't something, a category that you have, but obviously similar things are happening. And even in in-school suspension in our classes, that students aren't, you know, sitting in a room with nothing to do, they're still getting instructions. So, I'd like a better understanding of how that 12% compares to other middle schools district-wide. And I know that the district-wide rate for 2021, '22 was 2.8%, but that includes elementary schools. And my computer is too slow, for some reason, to pull the Mendez report up from 2021, '22 from TEA. But I would be curious about that as well. And so, I would really love to understand how those district procedures to reduce the time students are spending out of class are operating in relationship to Third Future. Is there, do we have an answer to that?
So, I can share just a little bit of information, trustee Boswell. So, the Third Future is utilizing our, so Third Future does have its own discipline policy, but when it comes to out-of-school suspension, the DAP placements, they follow AISD procedures. So, just like all of our other administrators, they contact our disciplinary office. So, they contact Mr. Adams' office, they consult with that team. Oftentimes, they contact myself as well, too, to let me know that they're going to actually be contacting disciplinary office. And then they work with that team to actually, before they actually make an out-of-school placement or even a DAP placement, and a lot of the times, it's very, with a lot of the behaviors, actually with all of the behaviors and all of the placements, they're all been in alignment with exactly what's happening at other AISD campuses. So, that's why, that may be why you see that number, is that they're just very much in alignment with what is happening at other AISD schools. We are working on, because I did see your question, we are working on getting the comparison to other AISD schools.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that, Ms. Bailey. And so, are other AISD schools removing students to out-of-school suspension for disrespecting teachers? I thought we were doing only things that had to be.
No, not for discretionary placements, no, we don't do that, but for fighting and vaping.
Right.
Yes.
But we're allowing those discretionary removals at Third Future, even though that's not our policy district-wide?
Not so far, and I think I may have misspoke, for OSS, that is specific, that's specific to Third Future's policy, but not for DAP placements.
Okay. Thank you. And then, do we know if there have been any transfer requests? I know we talked about expulsion, your manual talks about expulsion, and there was some. And we talked about anyone who you were seeking to remove from the school would have to follow standard Austin ISD kind of transfer revocation practices. Has that been an issue with any students so far?
I can tell you that 28 kids since August 3rd have disenrolled. I do not know if they transferred or not.
Well, but are they students who chose to disenroll or are they students who were, you were hoping to revoke their transfers?
Oh, no, 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 these are kids that voluntary, yes.
Okay, so that has not been used at all in this system?
No, ma'am, no, I didn't even know that existed until just now.
Okay. It's something we talked about in March, but yes, that's helpful to know. So, yeah, I would just, I will look forward to that deeper information about the out-of-school suspensions. And does anyone know what our percentage for middle schools roughly is? Is that information that we have right now?
No, Mr. Adams-
Is it anywhere close to 12%?
So, I don't know the information I've had. I know Mr. Adams is working on, we did get the request, so they are working on compiling the data to try to provide something for you all. But right now, I don't know what the, a rough estimate would be.
Okay, I would say that seems like an extraordinarily high number to me. And if it is anywhere near 12% district-wide, we have more work than I thought we needed to do to do. And I would hope that we can do some work to maybe pull that in more in line because that's a whole lot of students missing a whole lot of school. And the fact that they can be on Zoom is valuable. I appreciate that that's done, but it's still time out. And I would hope that we can work together to find ways to bring that into alignment with our district values.
Yes, ma'am, we'll look forward to seeing that data as well.
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, trustees.
I think trustee, I got a question.
I think we, I think a few trustees might have additional questions, but given the time, would it be okay if we emailed the questions to Dr. Reach and could get them to you? Okay, great, and was there something else on the base?
Yeah, so I will say this, one of the things that we were focused on in selecting a new partner was somebody that was actually a partner, and you see Mr. Craddock here, been baptized tonight and learning the Austin way.
Welcome to Austin.
The Austin way, you know, I think that what I can say is that Mr. Craddock and Third Future have been very open to working collaboratively with Austin ISD. We actually have regularly scheduled meetings where trustees have participated, shared those updates that you all just talked about, attendance grades, behavior, so that, again, we proactively communicate. Again, one of the things that I would point out is, not to point out this, or call out our previous partner, but we didn't have parent participation at that campus. And for whatever the excuse may have been at the time, what I can say, having visited there, I think the first event that I saw, I went to, it was like 25 parents there. He was being kind and saying that, I don't know that, you know, Mendez, they did not have a football team, but they did have a football team this year. And so, I think that there's definitely some pieces, even with the discipline, I think once the data comes back, you're going to see a significant drop in between what they shared with you tonight and what was there last year. So, I think that they are definitely working hard to meet our expectations and looking forward to being a partner that helps us support the school becoming academically successful and supports our students becoming academically successful. So, I thank you all for your time tonight, and thank you trustees for your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Mays, thank you, trustees.
Thank you. All right, so Dr. Mays, would you please introduce the next item related to the campus improvement plans?
Sure, so Ms. Petrazzini, Mr. Hicks, Ms. Hanchin will be coming up to share where we are currently with our CIP plans, as well as some of the changes that we can look forward to with our STAR assessment from our state. And I'll turn it over to you, too.
Good evening, interim superintendent, Dr. Mays, and Board of Trustees, and a special welcome to the new board members. My name is Gilbert Hicks, I am the interim chief of school leadership. And with me tonight is Carolyn Hanchin, who is the executive director of accountability and assessment. Tonight, we will provide you with information on changes that will be implemented this school year for STAR assessments and the state's A through F accountability system, as well as an overview of our targeted improvement plans that will be brought to you for approval at the December 15th board meeting. Next slide. The STAR test this year will undergo significant changes for the 2023 administration, both in the design of the test and in the way the test is administered. in the design of the test and in the way the test is administered. The redesign is intended to improve alignment of STAR to the classroom experience, so you'll see on the chart that you see on the slide there, that effective classroom instruction on one side, and then what the STAR redesign does is make an attempt to align to that. And it's doing it by focusing on cross-curricular passages that are included, including writing compositions and all reading tests that grades three through eight. That's a significant change for the STAR test for this upcoming school year. Previously, you will remember that writing up through eighth grade was in fourth and seventh grade, and now it's going to be in third through eighth grade, basically full compositions in each one of those grades. And it will also be adding new technology-enhanced non-multiple-choice questions that will give students more ways to show their understanding and will better reflect the way teachers ask questions in class, but it will be very different than what students are used to, and they will have to be able to manipulate technology in order to be successful on the test, so not only know and understand what they are working with, but also be able to utilize the technology to do it. The new items include text entry, drag-and-drop, multiple select items in which there may be more than one correct answer, and graphing and number lines and much more. Our district-designed short-cycle assessments are designed to introduce these new item types during the school year in order to give practice to students with this new testing format. All students are going to be taking a test online, we've talked about that before, that is new, and previous years, they've been able to have a choice between, or schools have had a choice between taking paper assessments or online assessments, but now it's mandatory that all students in Texas take this STAR test online. There'll be very, very limited exceptions for students that have special situations, but there are a number of accommodations on the online test for students. There are things that, tools that are utilized across the platforms that will allow students to be successful and to experience accommodations. While the online assessments will provide faster test results in the future, we can expect to see a significant delay in the release of test results, that's a big change for this year as well. Students' raw scores, which indicate the percentage of items answered correctly, will be released in June, right after the test is taken, or soon after the test is taken, but the standards that determine whether the student achieved approaches, meets, or masters will not be finalized until mid-August, and that's over two months later than usual. Next slide. This is a part of the test that will not change, this has been what has been in place for the last several years, domains one, domain two, and domain three. The current A through F accountability system was introduced in 2017-18, and this was the overall structure then, and it still will be for this next year. Schools and districts will continue to receive A through F grades in each of the domains. What's important to know about this is that for student achievement, 70% of the score, and then 30% for closing the gaps on domain one, which is student achievement, or domain two, which is school progress, part A being the individual student progress, and part B being the comparison to other schools in the state. The state takes the best of those three scores and uses that for 70%, and then the 30% is the closing the gaps domain. While ratings for elementary and middle schools are based almost entirely on the STAR, well, they are based entirely on the STAR, there is a difference for high schools, and there will be some significant changes in what the expectations are for high schools this year, but in general, the high school scores include STAR end-of-course results, measures of college career and military readiness, which you will hear referred to as CCMR, and then graduation rates. So the Texas Education Agency introduced the A through F accountability system and said that they were going to keep it stable for five years, and this is year five, so that's why the changes are occurring right now. The cut points are going to look different, as I've already said before, and again, mid-August is when we will know where we stand. Ms. Hanchin will take it from here.
One of the changes that we're sure to see is a change in the way district ratings are awarded. Currently, districts are evaluated just as a high school is evaluated, it's just all the school, all the students in the district are rolled together in their CCMR, graduation and STAR rates are calculated in the school, and the district gets an overall A through F in each of those domains, as does the school. The state is proposing a new proportional rating through which campus scores will contribute to the district score and have a better alignment. Next slide. This is, the reason for this change is that the TEA is seeing a misalignment between the scores earned by campuses and the scores earned by districts. These are actual districts in the state, the district at the top is the district of six schools, the district earned a B, but all of the schools in the district earned Cs and Ds. In the small district at the bottom, the district earned an A, but the two schools in the district were a B and a C. So this proportional way of rating will not allow that to happen, those campus scores will be calculated into the district score. The next slide. This is a sample of how those campus ratings will play into the district rating. The score earned in each domain will contribute to the district score based on the size of the school and the population represented by that campus size. Campus two in this camp, this district of 2,417 students is 990 students, so campus two would represent 41% of the score in each domain for that district. The tiny campus, campus three with 62 students would just represent 2.6% of that district score. So what does this mean for AISD? We'll see on the next slide. A recalculation of our scores based on that methodology, we would still retain a B for our overall rating, but we would drop from a high B of 88 to a low B of 81. The bottom row is the recalculated scores on this new proportional rating, rating score, and that's assuming that everybody performed at exactly the same, you know, it's exactly the same scores that the campuses earned last year, and this is how that would come out. This is, it's almost certain to go this way, there might be a little bit of, some tweaks in whether domain A, 2A and 2B are both calculated for the district, or whether we just go with the overall two, domain two score, but it will almost certainly be a proportional rating rather than a standalone rating as it is now. As Dr., Mr. Hicks mentioned, the system has remained relatively stable, or very stable for five years, and that stable system has allowed us to look at our scores from year to year and calculate whether we've done better in performance, whether we've done better in growth, and that's been an advantage, we've been able to compare our performance from year to year. That's not going to be the case in 2023. The structure of the system is changing, but every indicator will change, and every cut score will be changed, and every target will be changed. It'll be a completely reset, refresh and reset, and we'll be starting again for the next five years. So it's going to be, it's not going to be apples to apples when we're looking at 2022 compared to 2023 outcomes, and the state is aware of that and is, will take steps to educate the public to the fact that this is a new accountability system, you can't compare this year's grades to last year's grades. They've committed to having a campaign to help districts with that communication. And in the spring, they plan to do a recalculation of last year's scores, the 2022 scores, to show what they would look like under the new accountability rules, so that we can kind of prepare ourselves for that, and then when we do get our 2023 scores, way into the summer, August 15th, yes, no, we'll get our ratings September 15th rather than August 15th, the ratings will be a month late, and as we mentioned, the STAR scores themselves for grades three through eight will not be released until mid-August. We'll be very late in trying to figure out what our campus ratings are, and then, you know, once we get the cut scores in the summer, we'll calculate our ratings and apply the new rules and be off to a fresh start for the next five years as we work our way through these ratings. The CCMR component is where we're going, we know there's going to be a big reset of scores. The, from 2017 to 2022, a high school with 60% of their graduates attaining CCMR, you know, CCMR, college career and military readiness, would get an A for CCMR component, that was, that 60 converted to a 90 on the scaled score. Now TEA is saying that in 2023, 88% of the high school graduates at a school will have to be at CCMR in order to get an A. So instead of a 60 going, scaling to a 90, 88 will scale to a 90, and a 60, getting 60% of your graduates to CCMR readiness will be a mid-C, that'll be a 75 instead of an A. So that's a significant change to our, to our high school scores, which will in turn impact the district score, because the high schools will contribute the most to the, to the district rating. So that's something that we'll have to prepare ourselves for as we, you know, have a different mindset, everything's going to just kind of roll back and reset as we go into 2023. But regardless of the changes to the assessment and the accountability system, student growth will continue to be a major focus of the district and the state, with the goals of eliminating student achievement gaps based on race, ethnicity, and economic status, and preparing all students for post-secondary success. Mr. Hicks will describe the ways in which we support growth in AISD.
So we can tell, the next slide, please. With the number of changes that are occurring to the test and with the uncertainty that's involved in the test, the one thing that we can keep constant is the fact that we keep our focus on each and every single student and making sure that we do the best that we can to ensure that our curriculum and our instruction are aligned to the standards and to the rigor of the standards. So in doing that, we have a number of tools available to us, the yearly planning guides that we have in our curriculum plan, our AISD data trackers, where we make the best attempt that we can to ensure that we know how our students are progressing. As Ms. Hanchin said, though, we don't know what the target is right now for sure with our progress, so we're going to set some aggressive targets to ensure that we overshoot, and then we're going to be happy when that overshoot is actually realized. Campus PLCs again, remember, I've always talked, I've been talking recently about the fact that PLCs are not a thing, they're a culture, and so continuing to enhance our culture of collaboration on campuses is something that we can control and we will continue to do as we support student growth. And then monitoring closely our MAP growth and looking for improvement from BOY to MOY to ELY, and then having our interventions be impactful and effective in between each one of those assessments, and the same thing with our SCA one, our short-cycle assessments one, two, and three. We will continue to have meaningful learning walks and provide strong observations, or observe strongly and meaningfully, and have strong feedback with those observations, and then continue our culture again of a data-driven instruction along with those, that culture of collaboration that I mentioned earlier. Next slide. Moving into the targeted improvement plan piece, you can recall that the ratings, the state ratings of DNF were suspended for the 2022 accountability year due to COVID disruptions over the last couple of years. Schools were rated as not rated if they did not achieve an A, B, or C. And that was by Senate Bill 1365. However, federal ratings labels of comprehensive and targeted support were assigned in 2022, and schools that received those federal labels were required to develop targeted improvement plans, or what are commonly referred to as TIPS for the 2223 school year. The targeted improvement plans must be developed based on the Texas Education Agency Essential Schools Framework, which has several levers included in it, the strong school leadership, strategic staffing, positive school culture, high-quality instructional materials and assessments, and effective instruction. Each one of the schools that develops a tip chooses two to three levers as their year-long focus. Schools that were awarded the TEA's Essential Schools Framework grant were also required to develop TIPS. Now, this slide shows schools in the three categories. The first column is the comprehensive schools support and improvement, and that's where the schools have to write a tip, and then they are required to be board-approved. The second column shows the participation in the Essential Schools Framework Focus Grant, and board approval is required for that as well. And tips for the schools shown in red, underlined, again, are the ones that are required for board approval, and they'll be brought to the board for consideration on December the 15th. And a school may appear in both columns one and two if they have a federal label and they also are a grant recipient. And the last slide, we have different departments that are supporting our tip monitoring over the course of the school year. Our school leadership team provides principal support through administrative coaching, and again, that culture of collaboration through the PLCs, and then classroom observation and feedback, and we work closely with academics. I've mentioned the year-long planning guides earlier, we have our academic coaching specialists that also work closely with each one of the executive directors to provide strong support, and then we are constantly looking at how we can improve our curriculum and align it even better in our assessments as well, to ensure that we have a strong implementation. And then finally, the campus and district accountability department supports administration of tips through, they're not really coaches, but individuals that are, have targeted feedback that they provide and support that they provide to our principals to ensure that they have strong implementation of their tip plans and strong monitoring of the tip plans as well. And that is it, and we are open to any questions that you may have regarding the STAR redesign or the development of tip plans and what the expectations are around that.
Any questions? Trustee Hunter made eye contact first, so sorry.
It's the adrenaline. Two, you're so lucky today. I do have one question and then one, I guess, question slash concern. The first is, how are, well, are we using T-FAR? Hmm, so no? Okay.
T-FAR?
T-FAR.
T-FAR.
The system that TEA launched in August, where teachers, departments, the district can put questions in, and it'll create a STAR-like test for you, and then you can grade it. It's basically a way to say, we train kids away, and we say, oh, here, take this computer test that you've never worked on all year. This will allow you to put test in, right, borrow tests from other teachers around the state, right? And so, I mean, it's free, TA is giving it to you just to use it.
We'll have to look into that, but we do use School City as our modality.
I'll use School City. Come on. That was not convincing, I use School City, back when we had innovation stations that were like, went to the ground. And the second one is, I really have been hearing this, that testing has increased, and so I, I don't know, because I don't, like, my kid take a test every day, I don't know. But if we could find out how often grades three through five are testing, SCAs, benchmark, mapping, and a map test, and then also six through eight, that's, I just would like to know, like, how often are we asking third through fifth graders to do some sort of assessment, not formative, right? Some sort of assessment, and then six through eight? I don't care what they do in high school, no, I do.
Thank you, I think that if we provided you with our assessment calendar, that would answer your question.
Perfect, that would help me out, that would help me out. And it's just, are we doing Windows? Because I think if we're still doing Windows, that might be why it seems like a teacher's like, okay, we're going to do it all today, we waited, everybody would take a test every day for the next hour.
Trustee Hunter, there are Windows in the assessment calendar, and we can provide that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, let me get Dr. Kaufman first. Go ahead, Dr. Kaufman.
Thank you, good to see you both. I have a couple of questions. One is around the supporting student growth in AISD, where the five strategies were listed there, and two strategies I didn't see listed there for improving student growth are instructional strategies and professional development. And so I don't need a lengthy answer now, but I would just like to get caught up to speed as a trustee with some information around the instructional strategies that are being promoted and monitored, perhaps the walkthrough form that is currently being used, and I would really like to see. And I would really like to see a list, a timeline and prioritization of the professional development that teachers are receiving.
We can, we can definitely provide both of those. I did hit on in my response, when I was going over that slide, leverage leadership strategies. I mentioned data-driven instruction. I just didn't mention professional development when I was doing that, but I definitely, we, professional development. So yes.
But when I hear leverage leadership, and I see a lot of testing, I don't see a lot of teaching.
Yeah.
And so I'd just like to know more about what the teaching strategies are that we're committing to as a district.
We can absolutely do that. And if that's an opportunity for a small group session, we'll be more than happy to do that as well.
Thank you. And then I was also curious just around the tip development approach. How much of that process is kind of district-led and directed versus how much is campus-led and directed? Because when I look through the 13 tips that are being submitted to the board for approval, of the two levers that each campus was able to select, well, I'm sorry, of the two to three levers each campus was able to select, no campus selected a third. They all selected two. And one of those two for every campus was data-driven instruction. And then for the other, the second one that schools chose, there were three that they chose from. One of which, I mean, four schools chose effective instruction strategies. So I'm just, again, I don't need a lengthy answer to this. I'm just curious if that was a strategic plan by the district to identify 5.3 data-driven instruction for every campus, or did every campus just choose that?
The process is quite prescribed by TEA. And we do have TEA monitors that meet with, with the teams, the campus teams and the principals and the support teams during the process. Data-driven instruction is required that they choose that as one of them. And they strongly encourage schools to stick with only two. I was, I thought there was one school that did have three, but it doesn't matter. That, I mean, they can have up to three, but they really encourage them to stick with two. And I, I'm quite sure the data-driven instruction is a required for schools that are in that situation.
Some of the schools that are not board-approved have picked three, and maybe that's the disconnect.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think too, they're usually doing it based on a needs assessment. And so they're looking at areas of weakness that they've worked through or talked through with the campus teams before they select the strategy that they need to use to address those areas of weakness.
Which is why it surprised me that all 13 chose the same one. Because if it's really based on the data analysis and the unique needs of that school, I would expect to see them differing a little more. But I also would understand if as a district, we're committing to one that we're going to fully support and lean into, and then allow discretion on the other three. I just was curious which way that happened. But thank you for the answers.
Trustee Zapata.
I was visiting one of my administrators this week and one of the, just doing a check-in. And one of the concerns that she brought up that I didn't hear in your presentation was the, the translation from bilingual and ESL. So the test, the new star test, they're very minimal difference, but the resources don't match. And so that's kind of problematic because teachers can't really work together because they're different stories. And so I was wondering if, if there's a way to address that.
Yes, the, our curriculum department and our med team are consistent, our academics department and our med team are consistently working on ensuring that we aren't doing just straight translations and that we're using authentic materials in Spanish for the preparation, is not the word I want to use, but for authentic instruction as we work through the school year. So it's not perfect, but we are still working on it and working on it all the time.
Heather's, Heather's, I'm sorry, Ms. Petrazini is walking up behind.
Good evening again. Nice to see everyone. So we are making sure that all of our curricular materials are supportive of the actual learning that students have to do. So like Mr. Hicks said, we don't want to just write a passage and have it, put it in Google Translate, fix it up, make sure it's actually correct. We want to make sure our students are engaged with authentic materials. And so even in the adoptions that we have, there are Spanish resources, but things are not completely aligned. And that is, that is a pain point that we have. And until we get to a place where everything can be, if it's this in English, then it's this in Spanish, then we're going to be in that space because we do want students to engage with authentic materials. The core content that the teachers are teaching, though, the actual standards we like for them to be aligned, because you do want to collaborate with your colleague and say, Mr. Hicks, how did you teach that? Even if we're looking at a different language, we want the actual content to be somewhat aligned so that you can, in your professional learning community, in your CLT, have those rich conversations around the actual art of teaching and the actual, how did, how do we teach inferring? How do, how do you help your students find main idea? How do you help your students understand how to do certain skill regardless of the language?
So let me just, so to be clear, so you're working on, on it? Or is this intentional that that way it's not, I mean, you want it to be authentic, but it's not consistent? It doesn't match the English versions and teachers struggle to work together? So I just.
We want the standard to be aligned across the classrooms. But I, I think we have to recognize that we don't want to take the version of Hansel and Gretel that Heather Petrazini wrote and just translate it into Spanish. We want to make sure we use a version of that story that is written authentically within the language. And so the actual text may not be identical.
Yeah.
But the content, the idea, the essence of what's there needs to be aligned. And that's where the rich collaboration can happen.
Okay. Well, that's what I get, that's what I'm hearing is, is very challenging to be able to do that. So, but thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Did you have another one, Dr. Kaufman?
I have a comment, so I'll do it.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, if there are no more questions, the next item is, thank you very much. Really appreciate your presentation. The next item is the superintendent search RFP. So this is an opportunity for the board to discuss a request for a proposal for an executive search form, firm for a permanent superintendent. Our legal counsel, along with Dr. Jacob Reach and Mr. Ed Ramos, are also available to help answer any questions. Trustees, we have been provided a draft version of an RFP and a copy of the RFP used in 2020. So now is our time to share and discuss our RFP and the timeline. So I would like to invite Dr. Reach, if you wouldn't mind giving us like a little overview of our usual practices with the RFP and what our options are.
Yeah, so thank you so much, Board of Trustees and interim Superintendent Mace. So talking with the RFP first, very briefly, and I'll be short about it. I want to share, why do we do an RFP? Why do we do a request for proposal? And it is, of course, a procurement process that we do as a governmental agency to ensure a couple of things. One, to ensure transparency. One, to ensure that we have a fair process that's easy to understand. But then kind of most importantly, when we look at procurement, it's to ensure that we're utilizing, we're being a good steward of public resources. And that's why we really look at procurement processes. So why we look at an RFP when there's lots of different ways we can procure goods? We can bid, we can do reverse auctions. But the reason that we do an RFP is because it allows us to set out kind of a, a idea of what we're looking for and allow people to respond back to that. And then we can then go and negotiate. And through that negotiation, we can come to what is best value for the district. So I didn't say what is the best price for the district, which we often have to do when we look at bids. But what is the best value for the district? So we can incorporate other ideas in addition to cost to ensure that we're getting something that meets our unique needs for whatever purpose we want to accomplish. So that's why an RFP. So for, typically for district RFPs, we follow a couple of rules. Of course, there's law, and the law does require that when we do an RFP, we need to post it. We actually have to post it twice, has to be posted one week after another. There's not really other rules on that, other than you got to post the one week after another, and you got to leave it open additionally after that. And then you can close it. You have to have a public closing. It has to be accessible to whoever submitted, really accessible to the public, but certainly to whoever submitted, so everyone can come and see who submitted. And you actually say, we have a submission from X and we have a submission from Y. You don't go through it at that time, but you say who it came from. The state has also stated what they call some best practices. They don't require governmental agencies to do this, but they say that these are things you should do when looking at RFPs. And two of those things is they say that you should have a process that you typically follow for when you do RFPs. So what they mean by that is that we shouldn't decide one day we're going to release it on a Saturday, the next day we're going to release it on a Thursday, one day we're going to have it up, open for a week, one day we're going to have, well, we couldn't for a week, but, you know, one day we're going to have it open for six months. They say you should typically have a process so that when buyers, or I'm sorry, sellers, because we're the buyer, when sellers are looking at what services are available out there, where can I go provide my services? They have an idea, you know, that, oh, Austin ISD does this on such and such date. The other thing the state recommends is that you at least have RFPs posted for 30 days. So those are two processes that we, as a district, have always tried to follow. Now I say that to also state that these are recommendations from the state. They're not requirements. We can certainly deviate from that. But typically what Austin ISD has looked at is posting on Tuesdays, and we typically always try to do our 30 days. We sometimes do longer. We tend not to do shorter than 30 days. So that's kind of a brief overview. And then the last thing I'd say is that for Austin ISD, we now use electronic RFP system. Some of you may recall, we used to have everything where RFPs would just post it on our website. You download it and then you either mail it in, or people many times would actually print everything off, put it in a packet, and they would bring the packets to us by the deadline. And I actually worked in the finance for an office for a while. And I recall people would, you know, be running up there with all their packets signed right at the deadline to try and get them in. But now it's all digital, so everything that we have is on a digital platform. And that really makes it a lot easier for getting everything in. So Mr. Ramos or I are more than happy to answer any questions about the RFP process or if we can be of any assistance for this RFP. We're here to help. Mr. Ramos has a person on his procurement team who's actually going to be your procurement point of contact. And then I'll be your staff point of contact for shepherding through your RFP. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reach. So I wanted to, I appreciate that explanation because I think a previous discussion we had had was that the board would actually vote to approve the RFP. And what I learned, I think last night, or maybe it was this morning or something very recently, is that that could actually mess up our timeline a little bit for, and it would also kind of violate some of our existing practices. So really, we, as trustees, we have a cho, but we can do really what we want. So we have a choice. We can either stick with the existing practice and, you know, get feedback to, to Dr. Reach in the next couple of days if we want, if we want to see changes in this RFP and not vote on it as a board, but, you know, discuss, you know, come to a consensus right now or send some feedback to Dr. Reach if you see something later that you want to change. And they would post it on Tuesday of next week. That would allow, that would allow us to post on the regular Tuesday, which is what people tend to expect from AISD. That's our day. And it would allow us to post it for the full 30 days because we want to be able to approve the search firm at our January board voting meeting, which means we'd have to present it at our board info session. So if we waited beyond December 6th, it would mess that timeline up. If that makes any sense, at 12:39 AM. Okay, so that's option A is we, we just, we talk about it. We say, yeah, this looks good, maybe change this thing here or there, and we're not going to formally vote. Or we could wait until December 15th formally vote. But understand that that could shorten the amount of time that the, that the RFP is out there if we still want to stick to a January decision date for the search firm.
To clarify, the board will vote to approve the, the selected vendor?
Yes.
But you're asking whether we also want to approve the actual RFP?
Exactly.
Okay, I have no interest in approving the RFP, but I have interest in selecting.
Oh, yeah, for sure. We'll vote, we'll have a whole process for that. Maybe we can, does anybody have a question for Dr. Reach? And then we can kind of go down the line and see what people have a preference for. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Is it okay if I, if we go down the line and just see? Okay. So Dr. Fa, the question is, do you want, do you want the board to, to formally approve, like, vote on and approve the RFP for the search firm?
No.
Okay. Perfect. Trustee Willie Chu? Okay, not sure. Trustee Hunter?
I just always want to do that, people watch. I thought that was really cool. No, I have no, this looks like an RFP, looks really like what an RFP should look like, so.
Okay.
No desire to.
Awesome.
Do you want to talk, change it? You, you tell us what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, okay. Great. Trustee Gonzalez?
I'm okay with foregoing voting on it. I do, oh, sorry, thank you. I'm okay with foregoing voting on the RFP. There is a change that I would like to see. But we can, we can talk about that. But for the sake of expediency, I'm okay.
Okay, great. I'm okay with it, with not voting as well.
I'm okay with that voting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm also good without voting. And I do, as long as we have an opportunity to provide input, I think the timeline is crucial.
Okay. So I appreciate that. Okay, and you're okay with that too, Trustee Willie Chu? Okay, cool.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Does Trustee Gonzalez have to raise his issue in open meeting?
I was about to ask, Dr. Reach or Board Counsel, what, do you have a recommendation? Should we?
He doesn't have to if now doesn't feel like the time to do it. And it may be a, just a private conversation that needs to be had.
So what we can do, Dr. Reach, you and I had discussed maybe having trustees email you potential changes or recommendations?
Yeah, so if the board is interested, what I would like to suggest is if there's any feedback now, I can make draft changes that are agreed to, get you a copy tonight. And then we'd ask, and then we'll send it back out to all trustees. And then ask if any feedbacks should be sent to Ms. Medio and myself by Monday. We'll say it like noon. That would allow us to make those change, we would meet at noon, make those changes, get you out another draft Monday afternoon to allow us to then post Tuesday afternoon.
Okay, great. So Trustee Gonzalez, if we, if you would like to go ahead and share your concern right now, and then if we can, if we think of other stuff between now and Monday, we can email Dr. Reach.
Sure. I have read over the RFP. I've read over a couple of past RFPs from past superintendent searches in the ISD. One thing that I would like to see is an explicit statement that says that I would like, we, I don't know if it's anybody else aside from myself, but I would like to know the capacity of a firm to conduct an open superintendent search. It, it says in, on page seven in, of section four, part B, number two, section two. It says, "In the section, describe the methods the firm uses to do outreach to potential candidates, including recruiting candidates who may have not already expressed an interest in a new opportunity. The proposal must also include appropriate process and timeline for obtaining input from the Austin community. Describe the methods of community engagement recommended and practiced by the firm and express the firm's process for balancing community transparency and candidate privacy." It seems implicit there that we might be talking about it open search, but I would just, I think it's going to affect the, the, the capacity of the firms that respond to the RFP if we don't state that at the outset. So that is one change that I would like to see. I don't know if other trustees share that sentiment, but.
And Trustee Gonzalez, if I may, right above that, under section one, D, item, let me make sure I got my Roman numerals correct. Item four, I wrote, I added a new sentence in there that was new from the previous RFP. Provide confirmation of your ability to operate an open search if requested. Enlist previous experiences of conducting an.
can email Dr. Reach by noon on Monday. Any other? Nope. Okay, cool. Thanks, y'all. All right. Oh, my gosh. So this ends, oh, I shouldn't get too excited, there's still more.
Don't get excited yet.
Not yet. Okay. This ends the section on the information reports from the administration. At this time, we'll now move into the preview of the upcoming regular board agendas. This will allow the public and trustees the opportunity to review the agenda items that will be considered for a vote at the next regular board meeting. AISD staff is available to answer any questions for tonight's preview. We will begin tonight with item 12, which is the agenda preview for academics and curriculum. Trustees, are there any questions on this item? And that includes 12.1, which is the approval of heads, of the Head Start Annual Report. All right. The next section is 13, Board Administration. Trustees, are there any questions on these items, which include 13.1, Appointment to the Board of Directors of the Travis Central Appraisal District, and 13.2, Amendment to Electric Bus Resolution? Oh, yes, Trustee Hunter.
No, Chief, it's just you. It's going to be quick, it's going to be good, I promise. Good evening, Chief. Thank you for hanging in there with us.
Of course.
I was looking over the amendments, happy to see section four, the timeline, because it was a little scary before. As part of the pilot program, I just want to verify and make sure that I understand there are three buses?
Yes, Trustee Hunter.
Okay, perfect. And then the one thing I would ask is that when we are, or when your team is developing, where the, deciding where those EVs are going to go, that your department consider which routes communities are marginalized, underserved, and overburdened by pollution already? And then, you know, three buses, three terminals, I mean, I'm just saying. But no, that's something I'd really like to consider because we already know that students living in poverty are so much more, you know, at risk for asthma because of the spaces they live, the, the pollutions that they breathe in, and then even the areas where there, there's housing, right? Like, hey, let's put a landfill, they're poor, they won't care. And so I think if we have an opportunity to perform some social justice, environmental justice at the same time, I'd like to see us do that.
Trustee Hunter, we are very much aligned. One of the things that we're also exploring is just timing. As you know, as all the trustees know, we have significant investments from the 2022 bond program that we'll have to align to ensure that we have the infrastructure in place to actually charge the buses. So for us, we are investing right now in developing a comprehensive plan, starting with the pilot, wanting to make sure that our historically disturbed communities benefit first, but we also have the timing of the significant improvements, including Nelson Terminal, so we'd hate to put something in and then have to rip it out. So all of that will be presented and provided, but absolutely, we're thinking about that.
Thank you, Chief.
Is that it? Any other questions on that? Okay. All right, the next section is 14, Business and Finance. Please note that the administration is pulling item 14.10, which was the, I think, yep, that was the NXP Agreement Approval Site Two. That was a smaller of the two sites, correct? All right, and so we will not be bringing that one back to the board for consideration. Trustees, are there any questions on these items?
I have a question, but not on these items.
Okay. Let's, go ahead, Trustee Hunter. Well, is it like, is it somewhat related to?
It's about NXP, but I don't think that our staff here is the one to answer it. I have a question about the CHIPS Act.
Okay.
Okay. Come on, hurry. Go quick.
And then Dr. Kaufman, you also had a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, my first question is, does NXP have access to the CHIPS Act without the 313 agreement?
It is possible that they could. They have to have some type of governmental partnership.
Okay. But doesn't that have to, you mean, say, now you confuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, so part of the CHIPS Act does require that they pursue any type of partnership that they can with governmental entities, you know, mostly these, these types of tax breaks.
Okay.
So they need to pursue all of them. They can't say, oh, I'm only going to pursue one. But to the best of my knowledge, as long as they have created partnerships, then they would qualify. So what I mean by that is I believe, although I don't have 100% confirmation on this, that they've also reached out to the city of Austin.
Okay, so that could give them, because the way it's billed is that you need to do this so that this can happen. And then under the CHIPS Act, would NXP receive federal tax credits also? Like, they're going to get a kickback from the Fed?
I am not sure how the CHIPS Act is set up. We do have a consultant who I could ask that of, who would probably be able to give us a little bit clearer of an answer. I do know that they receive direct funding from the federal government that helps with construction cost.
Okay, so I'm reading this, what companies need to know about the CHIPS Act. And it says, "The statute establishes a new federal income tax credit, 48D tax credit, worth 25% of the cost of certain qualifying properties placed in service as part of a facility for the manufacturing of semiconductors or semiconductor manufacturing equipment. The credit will exist in a new section of the U.S. Internal Code, Revenue Code, and will regu, will be regulated by the Department of Treasury." They get two bites of the apple?
I will have to check with our consultant.
Please.
Who has a, and I'll get that out as a board response.
Because I'll just leave it at that. Please check. Thank you.
Trustee Kaufman?
Thank you. This is also for you, Dr. Reach. I've heard concerns that the, this is regarding 14.9, the NXP Approval Site One. I've heard concerns that this 313 agreement would benefit Austin ISD, but would take away funds that would otherwise go to other schools across the state. It also may give the appearance that after asking taxpayers to approve $2.44 billion in bonds, the district is giving a tax break to a business. Given the way that the state funds school districts using a standard per people formula allotment, and given that the state is sitting on a $27 billion surplus, some of which is the result of the state collecting more education recapture funds than it actually pays out, it leaves me with two questions. One, will approval of this 313 agreement, which clearly benefits AISD, result in any other school district receiving less funding to serve their students?
No. Austin ISD, either approving or not approving this agreement would have no effect on how much money other districts receive.
Okay, thank you. And two, are the tax breaks requested by NXP in any way related to the AISD bonds, or will they create any additional burden on AISD taxpayers?
They won't, and we also want to clarify, they would not have an effect on our compression amount, because Austin ISD already has so much growth, we're already at maximum compression. So again, whether this property is built or not, we will still see maximum compression next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Foster?
These might be for Chief Ramos. A couple more questions for clarification. The public comments were sort of, there was, there was a lot going on in the public comments, and so I think it'd be worth some clarity. Would the 313 agreement lead to more money in the AF, in the AISD coffers? And if so, how much?
So the original estimates were, an estimate at 75 million over a 10-year period, so an average of about seven, seven and a half million per year, and those would be additional funds that are not subject, that would not be subject to recapture.
So we would be having additional revenue, additional funds in our coffers, those, and those funds moreover would not be discounted by recapture as other funds are, so that those dollars actually would go farther.
Correct.
Than our general property tax dollars.
Correct.
Related to that, in terms of the use of those funds, one of the things that I'm deeply interested in is not a 1% or 2% or 3% pay raise for our teachers. One of the things we said about the bond was that the savings on the maintenance and operations side alone could fund a 3% raise. So I feel like we've already thrown our hat in the ring and committed to 3%. Would this help us down the line in terms of our capacity to have us be the central Texas leader in terms of teacher salaries?
It would. What we would do with the additional revenue is we would set it up in a separate fund so that we can track it as a district and provide that transparency to the board. Ultimately, we would look at the board for guidance on how to best use these funds, and so one of those uses could be for additional teacher compensation, employee compensation.
And that would be sort of up to the board in terms of the guidance we provide when it comes to budgeting.
Correct.
I guess finally, if the company does not, if, how do I ask this? I'm looking at the possibility of the company building with no 313 in place. So in other words, an entity would come and improve their, their grounds. It seems to me that that would raise property, that would, that would be more property tax revenue. In other words, our recapture, in terms of the formula, would our recapture actually go up more if 313 came, excuse me, if NXP came without a 313?
So if an entity built an additional building without a 313 agreement in place, it would increase our taxable values, which would be subject to the recapture system. So it would increase our recapture payment.
Thank you.
So about 140 million over 10 years, is what Dr. Reach stated.
Whispered into your ear. So I think there's a robust conversation to be had, and I, I thank you for the clarity. There was somewhere in my documentation, I had a estimated effects, you know, the sort of financial impact of 313, the application over, over time. That would be great in our net, you know, when we get to this discussion next time to have that as part of our information.
Thank you, Trustee Foster. Any other questions? Trustee Zapata?
Mr. Ramos, one of the callers mentioned that NXP is not subject to providing workers safety, safe standards going to follow what AISD, some contractors have. I think we adopted a resolution for better builder standards, and they do not have to do that. Is that true?
They don't have to as part of the 213 agreement. They have some interest in doing that, and they are reporting the agreement they commit to.
Dr. Reach, can you come up? Dr. Reach, can you come up to the microphone? Trustee Zapata, it is correct that as part of the 313 agreement, there is no requirements that they set worker protections. That is true, but through the agreement, but that doesn't mean that they, they won't do so, and they have shared that that is something that they're interested in. I'd be more than happy to get more information from NXP on what they are willing to commit to. What I'm also aware of, I, I don't know what they're discussing with the city. All that I know is that they have reached out to the city, and I know nothing more than that. But I do know that the city does have some requirements through their different agreements that they can make, which are different than what we can do, that does have such protections in it.
Right. The city has adopted the better builder standards, so, so we won't know, it's not included currently in the proposal.
What I'm saying is, because the, the 313 agreement and the process, the application that gets submitted is very formulaic. You have to fill in the blanks.
Right.
And there's no requirement to have those protections. So all that I'm saying is that that doesn't mean that they're not going to do those protections. It just means that the 313 application doesn't have a place to say, are you doing those protections or not?
And will AISD provide enforcement for accountability for what they say they're going to do?
Better builder?
For NXP.
I, I do not believe so, because it's not our construction. I do believe that the city has, has a mechanism for checking on that. I would need to get more information and provide that back to the full board.
Thank you.
Yes, Trustee Willie Chu?
So I wanted to ask, when, when was this application approved?
You're talking?
By the Comptroller's Office.
The completion application? The most recent one?
The one, yeah, the one, there was one approved and one that they said they can't approve in time. So when, because someone on the phone said that this was approved November 13th?
13th, yeah.
And then, when did the public know that it was approved?
We, they knew and we knew, we received it on Monday. My understanding is that the Comptroller has many of these applications in front of it at the moment, and that is who created a large workflow. They also are, are short on staff, just like many other departments are across the state and in school districts, so that they are behind on getting some of this information out. The, what I was also told is that's similar to why they were not able to review application two. They have a timeline where they have to review it by, and they were not able to meet it because of the sheer number they have to review and the number of staff they have available. So what I was told is that they are just late in getting information out.
Okay, yeah, because I've been scrambling to try to watch the old board meetings to see what's been asked and not, not repeat a question. Something I haven't heard was when I'm looking through the application, so I'm seeing the, they had three options to pick from the, the wage that they will, you know, promise to, to set jobs at. And so NXP chose the lowest of these three wages. And so I just want to know, I guess, it's also hard because they're not here and they haven't been here to answer questions. Like, why, why was that, or why did we allow that?
So I can check in with them on that, and I can get a correct answer. I certainly don't want to speak for them.
Sure.
And when they were here at our board information session, I don't believe that we had that question at that point.
Okay, yeah.
So, but I'll be more than happy to check in with them, and we can provide that in addition to the other questions. That is a response for our whole board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question for you, Mr. Ramos. So I was, I wanted to clarify the net benefit to AISD for just the one campus property. So is, because I remember hearing the 76 million maybe last time we had, we talked about this, so is it still that amount or is it less now?
No, it's a lesser amount now.
Okay. So do you, so I'm just looking at my scribble from last, from the last meeting. It's, it looked like it was 64 million to the district, but maybe the net was actually 45 million for, for site one? Is that, is that correct?
We're pulling it up as, as the question is asked.
I don't need it the second. You guys, if you can just put that in the next update.
But it will, you're correct, it will no longer be the 70 some odd million because we're losing one site.
Okay.
So for site one, the larger site, it is a, so remember, there's two parts of the payment.
Yeah.
There's the revenue protection payment, and there's the supplemental payment. So I'm given both of those. The revenue protection is around 18 million, and the supplemental is around 45 million.
Okay, and that was for one site?
That's just for the site that is under consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's 67 million, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Trustee Foster.
You sent me, thank you very much, an extremely helpful chart that showed year by year what the revenue protection and what the supplemental would be.
And that was just for site one?
That came, just for site one that I think came today, and it's very helpful. So if you could make sure everyone has, I'm sure everyone does probably has it, but I think it came this afternoon when we were probably doing lots of other things. So there's a year by year chart, and it's that 44.8 that is above and beyond what we would otherwise see.
Thank you.
But the 18, my understanding is the 18.
The 18 can be seen as what we would have received.
Would be subject to recapture? Or it would be what we would have received?
As our golden pennies.
Okay.
So that's why it's the revenue protection.
That's our golden pennies.
You know, as Mr. Thompson shared with us last time, you know, why would we ever make an agreement where we lose money? So that revenue protection is to make sure that if we were to lose money, they're covering that, and then you move into the, the supplemental.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, yes, Trustee Zapata.
You sent me, thank you very much, an extremely helpful chart that showed year by year what the revenue protection and what the supplemental would be.
And that was just for Site One?
That came, just for Site One, that I think came today, and it's very helpful. So if you could make sure everyone has, I'm sure everyone does probably has it, but I think it came this afternoon when we were probably doing lots of other things. So there's a year-by-year chart, and it's that 44.8 that is above and beyond what we would otherwise see. But the 18, my understanding is the 18...
The 18 can be seen as what we would have received.
Or it would be what we would have received.
As our golden pennies. So that's why it's the revenue protection. You know, as Mr. Thompson shared with us last time, you know, why would we ever make an agreement where we lose money? So that revenue protection is to make sure that if we were to lose money, they're covering that, and then you move into the supplemental share.
So the difference in what we would see with versus without is that 44.8?
Roughly, yes.
Thank you.
So basically, so the benefit of new money to AISD is actually 45 million? Is that the way to think about it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I actually remembered another question. It was one I asked earlier, like, five hours ago, which was about the 350 jobs. And so I see in the, in Board docs, there's no asterisk, I don't think. But somebody had emailed me what's actually on the comptroller's website, and it does have an asterisk. So I'm just wondering which one, because it means two different things, right?
Yeah, and on Attachment Three is actually where you can see the number with the asterisk, and I'm looking at page four of 23 for that. And so I did go back to look at our application, and it's not asterisked. I went and looked at some other program applications, and I noticed that they're not asterisked as well. I mentioned earlier, these applications are very formulaic.
Okay.
So that was not the place to put that there was an asterisk. It was the attachment, which is included in the attachment.
Okay, so is it going to be 350 jobs even in Year One, or is it going to build up to the 350?
It's going to build up to 350.
All right, thank you.
But that was in the original application.
Oh, okay.
So it was not a change from the first one to this one.
Thank you. All right, any other questions on this section? Okay, all right, so the next, oh, was there, oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Oh, yeah, yeah, I thought I heard something, but then I didn't see, okay, thank you.
I'm accused of being quiet. Dr. Reese, real quick, so you said it's going to build up to 350. How is that monitored? And if they never get there, is there a punitive anything?
Yeah, and so our consultant was able to explain a little bit of that at our info session. I don't want to miss-explain it. What I can say for sure is that it is monitored, and that there are certain things in place that either have consequences from the state, consequences from AISD, so to speak, for failure to meet certain goals.
Okay, you can put that in our next communication or whatever, because what I'm really... No, that's good, I'm good.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so the next section is 15, Facilities. So trustees, are there any questions on this item? All right, the next section is 16, Human Resources. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? Yeah, did you want to, did you have a question about 14?
That's the contract on community engagement?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, please do, please do.
Yeah, so on, I'm just wanting to know, it's because I wasn't here before, I didn't see the RFP, what this contract is for, it's like, is it engagement about the campuses, or what exactly is it?
I didn't introduce myself last time. My name is Matias Segura, Chief of Operations. Thank you very much for the question, Trustee Hunter. Hello, everybody. So what this contract is for is to support the 2022 Bond Program for Communications and Engagement. So as you know, we have many campuses that we go in through modernization or phased modernizations or just large projects. And so as part of that process, we work with our school communities to develop campus architectural teams. We have ribbon cuttings, we have engagement opportunities with our community. The entire sequence of support used to be within our program management's, manager's scope of work, but what we've since done is pulled that out so that we had better control over how that was conducted. So that's what that contract is for. It reports to Annie and DCC within Communications.
Perfect. And so this is in addition to, because like, if they're doing that, what are our comms people doing?
So one of the things that's very useful is that we have a community and engagement group that's tied to the Bond Program, that it functions as liaison to the school community. So the consultants actually provide depth, and really are the ones that are the group kind of producing the collateral, making sure the events are in sequence. Our internal communication engagement team is actually quite small when tied to the bond itself. And so if you can think about the number of projects we have, we'll have about 40 projects that will require this type of support. And so the goal is to create a team of folks that support not only the principal and the administration at the school community, but also on the engagement side as well. That team will be the liaison, not only for the Communication and Engagement Consultant, but also for us as, you know, as owners, kind of working through the project itself. So they're the ones that are kind of providing the direction while the consultants provide the depth and on kind of the execution side.
And the rubric, excuse me, the rubric that we have with the highest score, this is the company that you would be at?
So the rubric is completed outside of operations. That is done within the Procurement Division that supports, that's within the Chief Financial Officers Division. And so the way that it works is we produce a scope of work, we provide that scope of work to the Procurement Department, the Procurement Department then develops an evaluation matrix, and then they score it accordingly. I'm not...
You used to be a vendor, I'm familiar.
Yeah, so I'm not, I can't speak.
My question is, is that, so I'm not familiar with this process. So this is the company we're going with, or at some point, are we going to talk about that, or what's...
So the way that it would work is that we would enter a negotiation pending approval of the board.
That's what I'm looking for.
And then we would negotiate, because one of the things that's not known is which projects will be allocated to which vendor and kind of what the scope and breadth and pricing as well. So we have an estimate, but the contract is not signed, that negotiation hasn't started yet.
Okay, perfect.
We haven't engaged them at all.
Well, and because I did a little bit of research on this particular company, and I think that concerned me is their coordinators, I don't have the word, monochromatic? It's not very diverse, right? And so when I look at those people who are going to go out into our community and engage with our families, I'm like, hmm, this is like our classrooms. Maybe it's not, you know, the best thing. I believe they have two people who present as Hispanic, their last names are Hispanic. They have two people who present as African-American, right? And so I just am wondering, like, are we going to provide language support? Do they have language support of that, is that person bilingual? How does all of that work? Because I think about 17 of those schools are where, yeah.
Absolutely, Trustee Hunter, and we are thinking very much about that. As you, we are developing the schedule itself, identifying the teams, identifying the resources. We'll work with DCC, Annie, and the rest of the team to identify the proper solution for each school community, but it has to be tailored approach, it just has to be. So I can certainly, you know, provide some additional feedback. I don't know the details, just because I wasn't involved in the actual evaluation. I don't know, Annie, if you'd like to weigh in, but...
Sure, sure. Sorry, good evening, trustees. Yes, we have, we have a breakdown of the staff who is going to support us from those, from each of the companies, we could provide that to you. And that was one of the components that we did emphasize quite a bit with them, was language diversity, cultural diversity, all of that, and we could certainly provide that to you.
Perfect, because I just, I couldn't find the RFP. Well, I mean, to be honest, I had a lot of homework, but I did like, look for it real quick, but didn't find it. But yeah, to think that, just to know that we're thinking about those kinds of things, that we always say diversity and equity and, you know, inclusion, but are we doing it? And is it operationalized, right?
Yes, ma'am, and it was a big part of...
And so, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, it was a big part of the scope of work, too, when we did this.
Thank you.
So recap, I apologize for not doing that earlier. So any more questions on Section 14? Okay, and then 15 with Facilities, are there any questions on the Facilities items? Okay. The next section is 16, Human Resources. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? And, oh, yeah, sorry.
I did my homework.
Yes, you did, go for it.
Real quick, it's going to be fast, too, I promise, I promise.
Don't forget your microphone.
Hang on, I'm just using my teacher voice, I'm so sorry. Real quick, in reading over the MOUs, a real quick clarification. So there are, there's an agreement between Texas Tech and Austin, and there's an agreement between Texas Tech and Region 13, help me understand.
Yes, ma'am. So these are T-Class MOUs. Are you from, I know you're familiar with T-Class, is everyone familiar with T-Class? Do we need any information there? Just really quickly, it is an intentional way to build internal teacher pipeline, and that is obviously something that we are very interested in. The reasons there are two is that Region 13, the service centers, set up kind of like a, hey, we're going to set you up and get you started, and it's a two-year gig, and then we're going to go hands-off. The additional MOU is to start and establish a direct partnership that you don't need to be facilitated by the service center.
I'm surprised we got into Texas Tech, they were real full, we must have...
It really hurts my heart, mostly because Jacob Reese went to Texas Tech.
Oh, I saw that, there we go.
But yes, ma'am, it's, it's, one will end and has a very finite timeline, and the other one is for a longer-term solution and getting that up and going.
Yeah, no, appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, so the next thing is I know that we're looking for a sustainable source, and if at some point, not right now, because this is early...
No, no, we're working on it.
If we can get a ballpark on what we're supposed to pony up, right?
We can do that right now.
Oh, okay, come on.
So Mr. Ramos and I actually had a meeting about that earlier this week, because we do, part of this is that you have to work out a sustainability plan. And so all in all, like, all in for us to, and what we're interested in is a really robust program of, we'd like to go 40 a year.
Wow, that was my next question, how many residencies?
We want to really build this up. And if we did that, you're looking at close to a million per fiscal year. So, but that's...
That's a good deal, I'm sorry.
It is, and then there's, there are various ways that you can go about doing that. And university partners are just chomping at the bit to partner with us. So you'll start to see MOUs roll in, and we are very excited about that. We have to do our homework about it. But Mr. Ramos and I have talked about various funding sources that we could possibly look at how we reallocate resources. I'll give you a very brief example, but, you know, we budget X amount of dollars, for example, in substitute services, when we don't utilize 100% of those, how can we possibly, again, I'm not putting us, that this is a done deal, but how can we repurpose some of those dollars to funnel into our T-class program? Socorro ISD rolled out a beautiful model for this, and so I absolutely want to steal it and make it better, but that is a great model that we are going to look at.
Excellent. And then finally, will the residents be able to substitute?
Will the residents be able to substitute? So the goal is to have them as FTEs, like...
Oh, so you're going to, it's going to be side by side?
We want them to be teacher assistants.
Oh!
Absolutely.
Okay, so perfect.
We want them 100% full-time, we want them to be a part of AISD, and we want to keep them.
Okay, excellent, that was it, thank you so much.
Anybody else? I am. Thank you. All right, any other questions on Section 17? Or no, that was 16. Any other questions on 16? No, okay, so the next section is 17. Trustees, any questions on that item? Okay, well, this will end our regular agenda preview, and we will now recess the open meeting at 1:17 a.m. And move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. For viewers at home, this concludes our live broadcast. Wait, no, it doesn't, never mind, it does not, sorry. Because we're going to come back into open session and take action on the board officers, and then we will conclude. So, thank y'all. As we, so we will now reconvene the open meeting at 3:09 a.m. So good morning. As we mentioned, the board moved into executive session to consider board officers. Texas Education Code 11.061C requires that a board consider their officers following any election and sitting of a new trustee. As required by law, the board has considered their officers. So we will now move to Item 6.1, consider and take appropriate action to select board officers. Trustees, do I have any motions? Yes, Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, Trustee Singh. I would like to motion to nominate Trustee Singh for the role of President, Trustee Foster for the role of Vice President, and Trustee Boswell for the role of Secretary.
I second.
Was it, was it, who was that, Foster? Who seconded it? Okay, I was just making sure, because I heard that, too. Okay, all right. Is, okay, having a motion by Trustee Gonzalez and a second by Trustee Foster to nominate Singh for President, Foster for Vice President, and Boswell for Secretary, I will now open it up for comments. Any comments?
It's 3:10 in the morning.
But I'm just really honored and thrilled to be serving with this board, and if we get elected with these amazing co-officers, I think we represent, as a board, some of the best that AISD has. And I think I speak for all of us to say that it's a true honor, so thank you. All right, so... Trustee Gonzalez, can you please repeat the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Trustee Singh for the role of President, Trustee Foster for the role of Vice President, and Trustee Boswell for the role of Secretary.
Thank you. All those in favor of the recommendation, please raise your right hand. Well, the motion passes by a vote of nine. Yeah, any other motions? No, okay, sorry, I already bungled it. Thank you, trustees, I appreciate it very much. All right.
Can I move, we go home?
Yes, you can, I am looking for it.
Where's our secretary, get to work.
Give me a second to find the right spot. Okay, adjournment. Secretary Boswell? Oh, we have to go back. Y'all are killing me, it's too late.
This is live, trustee.
It is live. So, so at this time, we will... I'm sure, unfortunately, I'm sure. Okay, please give me one moment. Okay, we will now recess the open meeting at 3:13 a.m. And move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. Yes, is that correct? Thank you. Oh, now I can, oh, that's right, we're not coming back. Okay, so viewers at home, this concludes our live broadcast. When we are finished with the, oh, yes, we're now finished with our live broadcast, right? Because we're not coming back? Right, okay, thank you. Okay, when we are finished with the exec session, we'll briefly return to open session to formally adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Sorry. No countdown, oh, just go?
This is in broadcast.
Oh, it's not broadcast, okay, so then we will now reconvene the open meeting at 3:56 a.m. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't have to write this. Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Kaufman to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Great, the motion passes unanimously with a vote of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 in favor. By all those on the dais, the meeting is adjourned at 3:56 a.m. Thank you.